I know the county has helped projects within the city. Yes, they're allowed to do that. It's not a big deal here. It doesn't work. Yeah, because Fowler is the cutoff. Yep. Seems like it's going to be a pretty quiet. Yeah. I'm kidding. They got it worked. You should go stay next to me. If you don't want to. Oh, no, it's fine. I know. Well.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. We're going to begin with our 501 public hearing regarding the substantial amendment.
All right. Sorry.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
What happened? Oh, we have a roll call first.
Ding Felder, Goode's, Anasalco.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
And Vieira.
All right, now we can go to item number one. Who's here for item number one?
Is there a member of staff present? A staff presentation first before we begin? I don't see a member of staff at this point. I can make inquiry, but I believe there's an item that's a walk-on that might be able to be taken care of in the meantime.
Okay. Let's...
Ms. Mora, are you here?
Yes.
Okay.
I thank you very much.
Yield to Councilman Citro.
Thank you much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, council people, council members, would you please indulge me in this? This is personal to me. There are times when I ask legal advice from Sal or from Marty or other people, but I have always had a very special person that has given me opinions, read me specific things about our legal in our city, and this person has helped me grow over the last three years. Even though Ms. Mora has been with us just a short time and is leaving us to go elsewhere, and I hope that sometime soon you will come back, she has helped me and she has advised many council people, much like people that came before her. She was always there, may not have given us the answers we wanted, but always made us think, and for that, I truly do appreciate it. You stay right where you're at. Because I've been reading so much lately, I really need my classes. Ms. Mora, I truly thank you for the knowledge that you have given me, and as one of our other legal advisors say, if we always learn from our mistakes, when I die, I will be a very intelligent man, and I thank you for teaching me along the way. You have been a help to me, and again, other council people. Ms. Mora, Tampa City Council congratulates you on the achievements as City of Tampa Assistant Attorney and wishes you all the well in your new career opportunity and all your future endeavors. Kristin has been an energetic partner and her dedication to detail and sound advice has served the city council members as well as those who have served on the variance review boards such as myself, such as Councilman Ding Felder, and has spent many hours with city council zoning and land use cases. Ms. Mora, you have engaged career, you have had an engaging career thus far, from the community planner to the Florida Supreme Court intern to various roles within local law firms. Your stay here at the city, and we wish you well in the future. Daphne City Council presents this to you in accommodation 12th day of September 2019. Thank you for everything you've helped me and the city council with.
Thank you so much.
Just have a few words.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your kind words and thank you all for this. This is extremely sweet and thoughtful. The pleasure has been mine here the last three years. All of you are excellent public servants. I have always been moved and touched by everyone at the city, how hard they work, how dedicated they are to what they do, and it has been my distinct pleasure to just be a part of that and to do my part as well. So, thank you all so much for this. Extremely kind.
All right.
Could you let us know if those comments are competent substantial evidence, please? I just want to thank you as a newbie, thank you so much for your patience and for educating me and bringing me up to speed, and thank you for always being available. It was fantastic working with you, and I wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Ding Felder.
Thank you. Well, Kristin, I'm glad we were able to snag you before you headed out the door, and well-deserved commendation. Thank you for your hard work. Joe brought up a good point, because I think back on a couple of times when I didn't call you up to the podium because I didn't want to hear the answer that you were giving, going to give me, because, but it was definitely going to be a truthful and legal response no matter how I might feel about it, and that's what we need. So, I know your clients at TICO will be well-served, and I'm sure you'll be serving the community continuing in many, many ways. Thank you. Good luck.
Councilman Goode.
Well, as I said yesterday in our meeting, it's been a pleasure knowing you and getting some advice from you, and just seeing you're a sweet person, you know, and knew you a short period of time, but we're going to miss you already. Like I said yesterday, good luck on your future endeavor. God bless you.
Thank you so much.
Any other council members?
What did he do?
Oh, wait, after.
Thank you very much for that. What I liked the most about you is you never backed down. If you knew you were right, you held your ground, and you can't ask for anyone to do that any better than you did. I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
City Council Attorney Shelby. I gave you a tie.
Thank you. I just want to briefly say thank you for your service to the people of the City of Tampa and your service to our clients, the city council. You've served them phenomenally well as an outstanding attorney, your knowledge. I've had a tremendous respect for you in your opinions and also your professionalism, and I'm very grateful to have had the opportunity and privilege to work alongside you and with you for the benefit of the city council and the people of the City of Tampa.
Thank you so much.
You're a tremendous asset to the City of Tampa family. We're certainly going to miss you. Very knowledgeable. You work tirelessly, tirelessly, because I've seen you in action and you're just always on the go, nonstop, and a testament to all your work. Look at everybody who's here. You have everybody from the city. Do I see the city attorney in the back? We have our new CRA attorney back there and so many others. I think Torito is here.
He's right there.
He'll be there on this side. The mayor would probably be here, but you know, she's out of town, so, you know, but we appreciate you very, very much. Thank you, and we wish you the best of luck. We will miss you. There's nothing more to say. Thanks.
Thank you all so much.
Giving him a shot, and we appreciate it.
All right, going back to, oh, I'm sorry, before we begin, Councilmember Goode.
Mr. Chairman, let me introduce one of our new interns to the office, Ms. Haley Reedy. She is a USF student majoring in economics and political science. She's in her junior year, and she will be interning with us for a little while. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I still don't see somebody from staff. I'd like the opportunity to contact them, because I would expect there is a presentation attached to this. If council would just bear with me to the five-minute recess.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess as we look for staff to start item number one.
Woods, Maniscalco. Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
And Vera.
So we have a little bit of a delay of waiting for Mr. Snelling. Uh, for item number one, so if we get a motion to recess until 5:45.
Aye.
Alright, we're going to move to Council on Citro second and then write it all in favor.
Aye.
We are in recess until 5:45. I apologize. It's one of those, one of those nights, days. We are adjourned until then, thank you.
Recession, recession.
Recession until then.
Now you can get up and walk around.
... It's almost a Scribner's era, if you would. But it makes that change and allows us to go forward for, on the nineteenth, is when those two parcels of land will be coming before council for purchase and discussion. I remember Councilman Dean Felder had some questions about the purpose of that and how many units we could build. I'd be glad to have that conversation next month, or next week, I'm sorry. So that's pretty straightforward.
And thank you, sir. Any questions from council?
Move the resolution.
Oh, and before, if I may, anybody from the public here to publicly comment on item number one, if so, please come forward. Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. My name is Shawn Wilson. I'm the president of Blue Sky Communities. We're affordable housing developers at 5300 West Cypress. I'm also a resident homeowner, 3714 West Rollins Street. I'm also the president or chair of the Bon Air Neighborhood Association, which is right at the corner of Dale Mabry and Kennedy. Very small, but very vibrant neighborhood association. And I'm here with Mike Marshall. He's our nonprofit partner that works with Blue Sky and he's with the University Area Community Development Corporation. A couple things. Of course, I would urge you to adopt the amendment to the consolidated plan. The HCD staff does a really good job. By the way, I'm also a member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, otherwise known as the AHAC, which meets periodically at the new place out on Lemon Street. I did want to get a couple things out. I don't know if this is going to show up, or I guess it's going to be facing me, and I'll hand these out. These are some invitations to a groundbreaking. It's, the property is not in the city, but it's close to the city, and we would urge you to come to the groundbreaking. There's also going to be a sneak peek of a property that, right next door, that's almost complete, so you can see what Blue Sky does. And of course, I would invite you to come visit any of our other properties. Unfortunately, none of them have been in the city. Been very difficult to find affordable housing sites in the city to do what we do, which is rental housing using the tax credit program. Extremely competitive. We usually use something called the nine percent tax credit, and there's one nine percent tax credit project per year in Hillsborough County, whether it's city or county. The last two years, the city has gotten that nine percent credit allocation from the state. The city right now is running a competitive program. They're accepting applications for people who want to submit a nine percent application. In the past years, the city has always given the funding for a nine percent application to the THA projects, either in Encore or in West River, most recently. We don't know who's going to come before the city to present a potential project for the nine percent tax credits this year. We don't know how many units it's going to be. We don't know if it's going to be something that's a high impact or very exciting. Blue Sky does not have a site. We do have a site, though, in the county, and it's 118 units. We actually have two sites in the county, 118 units and 144 units. We're going to be competing for some county funding that would give us the edge in the nine percent tax credit round in the county. If the city doesn't get a knock-your-sox-off project, doesn't get a great application for your funding, and that's a program that Vanessa is running, I would urge you to consider to stand down this year and allow the county to get the funding. Like I say, it's fair because the city has gotten it the last two years.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Councilman Gudes.
Got a question.
Right, sir.
What kind of housing is this? Is this workforce housing, mixed low-income housing?
This is, there's a few different income categories here. There's some units that are, it's rental housing. And the, some of the units are set aside for households at 35% of AMI or less, which is very low. And there's, but most of the units are set aside for households at 60%, which is kind of in-between very low and low. So it's rental housing. The target market is households with a total household income anywhere from about $18,000 to $35,000 a year. That's total household income.
The reason I asked that when I heard the word rental, because everybody is not ready to be homeowner. And so we need to, I mean, I'm hoping that Mr. Snelling and his group will start looking at this type of development, as far as rental, because I think that's needed, because everybody's not ready to be homeowner. But thank you for your information.
Yes, sir. And we're really excited to hear that you're going to be acquiring property, and we'd love to take a look at that.
Are you working with THHI, correct?
Yes. And we have a relationship with THHI as well.
Yeah, just as, let me jump in real quick. Just as a quick side, kind of to build on that, I, just before this, I was at the Tampa Hillsborough Homeless Initiative. I serve on that board. And Antoinette Triplet, who is the executive officer there, she was announcing that the THHI is working with these two gentlemen on a pilot program to do an acquisition rehab project. And then they'll, then at that point, they have somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple million dollars are going to put out to bid to expand on that project. Now, and as, was it Mr.? Shawn? Shawn. He said that when this program gets on, and those two lots, next month or next week, come before you and that goes forward, that will go through an RFP process. And whether it ends up being somebody bids on it and comes up with a great rental apartment or a single-family development, that remains to be seen. We haven't worked through any of those details, but the first thing we had to do was acquire the land. Before we could acquire the land, we had to make this change. So it all kind of goes full circle.
If Sir, Councilman Carlson.
If I could just, Mr. Snelling, if I ask you a quick question, if it's a long answer, we can schedule it for another time. But the issue that I've heard from nonprofits and others that want to build affordable housing is that there's a shortage of land to be able to do that, and especially within Ms. McCleary's department. But there's a, there's a theory by some of these groups that there's land that the city is banking in other areas, like in real estate or other areas, that could be transferred over. Do you know?
Well, part of, we're working with the advisory, affordable household advisory team. What they had asked us to, is to inventory all available land. I just finished that inventory. We came up with about somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 lots. We're not banking anything in real estate or anything like that. We've culled through that, and we have that list, and we'll be working with that group and with council to see how best to, you know, work through that program. But the short answer is no, we're not land banking anything. These are lots that are scattered. Many of them came through in a sheeted process from the county. Some of the lots are 40 by 80 or 40 by 60, which are currently too small. But I go back to some of the other conversation about, you know, tiny homes. One of those small lots may be appropriate for a tiny home. There'd have to be code changes to accommodate that with density in the comp plan, but it's, it still might be a possibility. And I think right now, what everybody's trying to do, what these gentlemen are trying to do, is just get a little bit more creative and think outside the box. You know, not, and as Councilman Gudes says, not everybody's ready for homeownership. So I think multifamily rental units does have to be one of the tools in your toolbox to address affordable housing needs, especially, I'm very happy to hear that, you know, whether they're in the city or in the county, to me, doesn't make a difference, because if you're servicing a population that's 35 AMI area median income or 65% area median income, that's fabulous, because that's a big, there's a big need for that. Those are about as poor as you can get and not be homeless, basically.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Nice colored shirt.
Thank you, you too. Tom, and these gentlemen, what I've been curious about is multifamily ownership. If there's, if y'all have seen any opportunity for that, are there any programs for that? Because as Mr. Gudes indicated, not everybody can afford a, you know, a home, a traditional home, would be the single family, but maybe the first step is a townhouse, you know, an owned townhouse, to get them, some equity built up before they move into the separate single-family home. So I'm wondering, have we had any built in the city or the county, multifamily with ownership?
Not to my knowledge, no.
I haven't seen it. And are there any programs, state or federal, or any opportunities for that type of instrument?
Well, they don't, if I may.
Let me jump in, go ahead.
There's no, there's no specific programs to build.
Please state your name, if you could.
Excuse me, Shawn Wilson, Blue Sky Communities. To the, to the councilman, I don't think there's any programs to build a new homeownership multifamily. But what the, the city and the county do have, I believe, are down payment assistance programs, where somebody might be able to find a townhouse for 150 or 175, if they exist out there, or 200, and get down payment assistance in the neighborhood of $10,000 or $20,000, and it fills a small gap. That's not for the 60% area median income households. That, you need, you need to be in the, you know, dollars, thousands of dollars per year. You probably need to be in 45, 50, $55,000 per year household income to afford that. And that's a different target market than who we serve.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, you know, like, the domains of the world are out there building the detached, you know, single-family homes to sell at a certain price level, 170 or whatever it is. But wouldn't it be nice if we could find, if we could participate in building some multifamily at 120,000 or something, and then, and then use the down payment assistance also?
Which, of course, we can, we can combine. You can do the city's down payment assistance, and there's other Florida Housing Finance Corp. payment assistance as well. But I think it'll be interesting to see what comes out of the advisory team, simply because I don't think there, I don't think anything's off the table. I mean, just because I, we haven't done that type of a project before, I don't, I don't think there's any federal regulations or requirements against it, that you have to only build single-family houses, or, you know what I mean? I, I think a townhome development of affordable units, you know, six, eight units at a clip, just anecdotally, I'm going to say, I can't think of a single federal regulation against something like that happening. Of course, Vanessa may be watching and saying, what are you crazy? You can't do that.
All right, thanks, gentlemen. Councilman Carlson.
I'll say this, I'll let, I'll be quiet and let us move on to the next one. The Encore project started, I think, 15 or more years ago, but there's a lot of land all around it. Is that going to be developed? What's the status of that?
Yeah, they, they're moving that along. They're, they're, they're trying to do some of the commercial component, and they're, they have more residential units that are going to come up out of that as well. They're, they're building that in phases as they're collecting additional funding.
And then the last thing, we had Vanessa come talk to us about affordable housing, but that was with our city council hat on, with the CRA hats on. Maybe at our next meeting, we can try to schedule something in the future, but it'd be great to have, I think it would be great to have some kind of workshop with you all to talk about how the CRA can bring affordable housing to all those CRA districts.
And I watched, you know, the CRA meeting this morning, and a lot of the conversation had to do with, you know, what the goals are for the CRA and how you can look at affordable housing and stuff. And I think we have the event coming up in East Tampa over at the middle school, is it Locke?
October 26th.
October 26th. We have that housing event going there, and, you know, I don't see anything wrong with, you know, after that gets done and we're moving forward, to come back and, you know, and maybe come to a CRA meeting and do something like that.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, gentlemen. And Mr. Snelling, you never, I guess, maybe one day you do have to apologize to us for something egregious, but you never have to apologize to us. You're always a gentleman, and you're always a pleasure to work with, so just no apologies are needed.
Okay, appreciate it, council. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, next we move, oh, yes?
I just have a question. Just to confirm, I'm sorry I was out of the room. No additional action needed to be taken on this tonight?
I was told no resolution needed to be passed for tonight.
Okay, if you just have a motion to close the public.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilman Nasko, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, sir?
Move to open items two through 11.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Nasko, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Crew, if you could please swear in the prospective witnesses, sir. If you are going to be speaking on any of the items on the agenda tonight, all of which are quasi-judicial, please stand up if you're able to do so. Raise your right hand if you're able to do so, and prepare to be sworn in.
If you swear in, you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we move to item number two. Oh, yes. Let's see, is it number?
Four.
Yep. Four, eight, and nine. Okay, are you here to speak on housekeeping first?
Yes, sir.
Go for it.
Mary Semeniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number four and item number nine, misnotice, and they cannot be heard because they did not file their affidavit, so they will be rescheduled. And item number eight, R E Z 1939, submitted a letter of continuance request to continue to the November 14, 2019, meeting at 6:00 PM.
Yes, sir.
If we could take care of items number four and number nine first by a motion to remove from the agenda?
We have a motion by Councilman Nasko, a second by Councilman Gudes, all in favor? Any opposed?
And I believe, I believe the petitioner is here on number eight, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. DeMayo, yep.
Does he need to address council? He need to address council, sir?
He need to address council, sir?
Come forward, sir.
We're just requesting a continuance because the city had asked us to make a few adjustments, so we were more happy to do whatever we have to do to make the city happy.
Is that November fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six P.M.?
Yes.
Move to continue.
And before, let me ask if I may, if there's any public comments. Is anybody here, here to comment solely on the continuance on item number eight, which is for the property at two seven zero one to two seven one three West Mississippi Avenue and fifteen thirteen South Awana Avenue and fifteen twenty South Havana? And it's solely on the continuance, ma'am? You sure? Okay, making sure.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, just so that the public is aware, there will be no further notice of that date. So my suggestion would be that you keep note of that date because if you wish to appear, you will receive nothing further in the mail or a posting regarding this.
And for the record, we'd be more than happy to meet with the neighbors and talk to them about what we, what we have planned to do, so.
And then, that's fine.
Absolutely.
Okay, may I have a motion to continue?
Move to continue, it's November fourteenth, twenty nineteen, at six P.M.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion to continue by Councilman Nasko, a second by Councilman Goode, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so for everybody in the room who's here for this item, it's reset to, what, November fourteenth? At six P.M. Just to let you all know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Mary Saminiego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Item number two on your agenda is S U two nineteen oh five. It's a special use for daycare requests for the property located at one zero seven zero one North Fifteenth Street.
Did you say fifteenth or, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Did you say fifteenth or fourteenth? I'm sorry.
Mary Saminiego, it is fifteenth. There appears to be a typo on the agenda. It should be fifteenth.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. David Haye with your planning commission staff. I have been sworn. We start the evening off in the university planning district, more specifically the university square neighborhood. The subject site is adjacent to transit along North Fifteenth Street. Transit is provided by the hearts Route forty-two, which connects the subject site to the Yukon Transfer Center and the university area transit center. The closest public recreational facility is Copeland Park, which is located approximately four hundred feet to the north of the subject site. And the property is located within a Level E evacuation zone. Here we have the aerial. You can see the subject site in the center. This is Charm Lane. This is Fifteenth Street, right here. You can see in the upper right of the aerial, that's Copeland Park. The area is predominantly single-family detached. There are some town, excuse me, some duplexes directly to the west of the subject site. The applicant is seeking approval through their special use to allow for daycare within a single-family home for a maximum of forty-five children. The request overall is consistent with the provision of providing a range of neighborhoods serving uses in close proximity to each other to serve the needs of the neighborhood residents. While one point of ingress and egress is located on a collector roadway, North Fifteenth Street, the second point of ingress and egress is located on the local roadway, which is Charm Lane, which requires approval of a waiver. The applicant is also proposing three parking spaces instead of the eleven required by the Land Development Code. Though the request for the daycare is overall comparable and compatible with that surrounding development pattern, planning commission staff did have concerns that the transportation waivers will nega, could potentially negatively impact the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood. Planning commission staff requests that the applicant continue to work with the City of Tampa Transportation Division to mitigate the, any potential impacts with those waivers. Overall, though, the applicant's request will create an asset to the neighborhood that will serve the needs of the residents of University Square Neighborhood. The request is comparable and compatible with the surrounding area and is consistent with the policy direction of the comprehensive plan. Based on that, planning commission staff finds the request, the special use request consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder, Mr. Haye.
David, I'm not sure if I should ask you or Mary. I know, I know in like alcoholic beverage context, we ask for police reports. Do we know of any code enforcement history on this? Because apparently she was operating this for a period of time since she got approval in two thousand and eight. And then it stopped for a hundred and eighty days, so that's why she's back in front of us again. So do we know any code enforcement or other type of enforcement history from the previous operation?
No, Mary Saminiego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Within every staff report that you receive, there's a section that states code enforcement cases. It's on page eight of your report. There have been none for this site.
None in terms of?
There have been no formal code enforcement cases on this property.
Right. My question was going to be, how far back would this search have gone?
This search would have gone back twenty, thirty years.
Really? Okay, thank you.
Councilman Goode.
I'm looking at the number for children at a daycare, forty-five. Is this a house?
David Haye, planning commission staff, it is, it was built as a house, but that's what it looks like when we went out there. They're asking for that daycare use with forty-five, up to forty-five, correct? Forty-five.
Mary Saminiego, if I could make my presentation, I'll explain every.
Okay.
If that's okay.
I'll wait.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, so Mary Saminiego, again, they are, the property is located at one zero seven zero one North Fifteenth Street. It was approved for daycare in two thousand and eight. It was case number V zero eight one two three. The property owner went through permitting and changed the house into a daycare unit and put all the required infrastructure and parking lot and driveway cuts in compliance with that two thousand and eight site plan. So it was operating as a daycare. At some point, the applicant, and she can ask, answer this directly, ceased the operation of the daycare. The code says if you cease operation for a hundred and eighty days, the special use expires. So now she's back today to, in effect, try to reinstate her special use approval for the forty-five child daycare.
I'm just looking at that address and I know that area very well because of the programs I have up here on Fifteenth Street. So the only place I can think of ever in a daycare is would be in that middle section between a hundred and ninth.
Hi, dear.
In, in Bogum Villa.
It's a very small daycare.
Yeah, okay.
It, it looks like a house.
Right.
And there's only two, there's three parking spaces there front. Here's the proposed site plan. Again, it's very close to what was approved before. So it was a residential structure. There's an ADA spot there and then just two parking spaces. So as one would drive by, it would read like a house. Based on the current configuration, again, the configuration somewhat matches the two thousand and eight plan, however, because she's in today, she has to meet today's codes, one of the special use criteria is that you have to either access an arterial collector. Fifteenth Street is a collector where the one-way in is, but the, there's a one-way out on Charm Lane, which is a local street. So that requires a waiver. And then for parking for daycares, we assume worst-case scenario that every child is an infant, because that's the most conservative parking requirement that we have, which is one staff member for four infants. And then the parking is based on number of staff. So in the worst-case scenario, for a daycare of forty-five children, assuming they're all infants, that would require eleven parking spaces and she's proposing three. Other than that, because of the parking waiver and the access to Charm Lane, transportation did find this inconsistent. There are just some minor changes to the site plan if you were to approve it for natural resources, as well as planning and developments and stormwater. Other than that, do you have any questions for me? Or did I answer all your questions, Mr. Goode?
Any additional questions?
Sure.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
Does anything need to be done before second reading?
Yes, sir, there is a revision sheet in this step report.
Revision, thank you very much.
Anything from council? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Applicant.
Good evening, I'm Anna Northfields. I'm a property owner of one zero seven oh one North Fifteenth Street. I've been there for twenty-two years. I've been living there for quite a long time. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I'm very familiar with my neighbors and I see a need in the community. I saw the need several years back, but due to family concerns, I had to pull away and take care of some family matters. Now, I'm here, I'm ready to move forward and with your permission, I would love to open up a daycare center. Also, in regards to what Ms. Saminiego was stating about the worst-case scenario for the parking, there is no daycare in Hillsborough County that is completely infants. The business would not last. It's, it's, there's no revenue would be made. The overhead would be too high due to the one to four ratio. However, with the daycare of this size proposing approximately, you know, a maximum, I'm sorry, of forty-five students, there's more leverage where you would be able to have more, one teacher with more students, like more so the one to fifteen ratio or the one to twenty ratio, for, of course, with older children. So that is the goal. And I've worked in childcare for over ten years. I've lived in Florida. I'm a native, I'm Tampa, Florida, all my life. And there are growing businesses that are going through zoning and they're transforming their homes into businesses which are providing jobs for the citizens in our community. So I think by, correction, I know by having this daycare center, I will be able to give back to my community by providing jobs and definitely being an asset to the community. I do, as Mary stated, I do have three parking spaces, which was approved prior to this particular application. And that's generally how it is in daycares. I've worked, the daycares that I've worked are mostly home daycares that have been converted over through zoning and going through this exact same process. And usually there's only about maybe three, four teachers max. And a number of these teachers are low-income teachers that don't have cars. Some ride bicycles to work, some use public transportation. And there's Route forty-two or bus number forty-two that goes, travels north and south on Fifteenth Street, which is literally right in front of the property.
Thank you. Anything else, ma'am?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Dingfelder had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
So I've read through some of this, I've heard your testimony. Tell me about historically, you got the, you got the original approval in oh, in oh eight.
Correct.
Did you open and if so, for how long?
I did get the original approval and I did open. However, I had some, it was unfortunate timing. It was a blessing that it was approved. Unfortunately, I had some family concerns where I had to stop with the business.
So how long were you open before you stopped?
How long was I open before I stopped? A couple of months.
Just, just a few months?
Just, just a few months.
And then how long was it closed?
It, it's been closed ever since.
So this goes back to oh eight, oh nine, that sort of thing?
That is correct.
The, to be honest, the forty-five children, it kind of blows my mind in terms of, at a, at a house location, but I'm not going to tell you how to run your business and, and that sort of thing. I had trouble just with raising two, but, but anyway. But on, on a serious note, how do you handle the, the drop-off and pickup with that many, potentially that many children? Let's say you're wildly successful, you're permitted up to forty-five by us as well as the state or the county or whoever does that permitting. So you're, you got that forty-five, so therefore potentially forty-five parents coming and going, how does that not disrupt the, the neighborhood?
Well, it wouldn't disrupt the neighborhood because we have a system where, oh, it's not on there now, but the way the drive, the way the driveway is set up, they're able to come in, drop their kid off, is fairly quickly and they pull out. I've worked at several childcare centers that have much less space, turnaround space than I do on my property and they're able to manage quite well. And I've worked at several, at least five different childcare centers in Hillsborough County. They have less space and we're, we're able to, to do just fine, just fine there.
So is there like a standard time, time period where they, where they all come at the same time?
Absolutely. We would open up as early as six, six-thirty. And usually parents have to be to work usually between eight, seven-thirty, eight, eight-thirty. So the bulk of the children that will be coming in would be between six, six-thirty and about seven forty-five. Our curriculum starts at eight o'clock. So the children will be there in the center during that time.
And, and one last question, Mr. Chairman. Have you, you, you sent out the notice to the neighbors? Did you hear back from any?
I, I did get full support from the neighbors. They're just like, why is it taking so long? They've, they've been, they've been supportive of me in this project for a long time. Again, I've been there twenty-two years and they have been working with me, giving me advice. So they've all, they all are supportive of this. I've had no negative feedback from the neighbors the first time around and this time around as well, along with the Neighborhood Association.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, sir.
Anyone else? Councilman Goode.
Well, at first, the forty-five concerned me, but I know the area very well. I've got some properties, unless they're two or three streets away from that. And I know the traffic on Fifteenth Street in the morning and in the afternoon. Explain the pickup process again.
Absolutely.
Especially the morning time.
In the morning time. So if, if a parent is traveling north on Fifteenth Street, they would make a right onto Charm and then go into my driveway the way they have been, you know, the way they've done before.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If anyone is here to publicly comment on item number two, or I'm sorry, item number, no, two, excuse me, please come forward at this time, three minutes a person.
Second.
Okay, we motion opposed by Council.
One comment before, before we vote.
Second.
I think we're all in favor of small business. Obviously, you know what you're doing, you've been in the business and you've taken on a big task. So I'm, I'm going to support you for what it's worth. But I will give you the caveat that if it's second reading, that there's opposition that shows up and expresses concern about this drop-off pickup and, and that sort of thing, I might have to reconsider a little bit. But that's just me. But I just want to give you that heads up.
And Mr. Shelby.
And Mr. Chairman, just for purposes of the record, if I could just have a little colloquy or dialogue with Councilman Goode. Mr. Goode, Councilman, sir. You had mentioned in your comments that you had property nearby. You have nothing within the noticed area, is that right? You saw, received no notice about this particular hearing? Okay, thank you. And also with regard to that, obviously, your knowledge of this area, you can still be fair and impartial and be able to decide your evidence on the record, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And Mr. Chairman, just for a council's reminder, this is a special use. This is not on the sheet that you normally have in front of you. So I just wanted to remind you that your criteria is listed on pages four, five, and six of the staff reports. Section twenty-seven one thirty-two, regulations governing individual special uses and the general standards in twenty-seven one twenty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? And, and I'll say something, ma'am, if I may. I, I agree with Councilman Dingfelder's sentiments, which is that there is some risk here. I guess, if you will, there's risk with everything. But, you know, especially given the fact that you're seeking to do a daycare center, something that's really badly needed in the area, that's an area of working families, people that get up every day, they go to work, they don't see their kids from seven-thirty to five or whatever, and, and they need businesses like yours. You are fulfilling a real community need, especially in that university Copeland Park area. So you're a small business looking to fulfill a need. We just want to make sure that it's fulfilled responsible, responsibly. Obviously, I mean, you have a history in, in childcare, you know exactly what we're talking about. talking about.
Absolutely.
And we're not talking about matters governed by the state, we're more so, that, that's a, a different type of an issue there. We're talking about more so the transportation issues, the neighborhood flow issues. I would love to see, just for my own peace of mind, if you could maybe go to your neighbors and, and inquire with them and get something in, in writing or something of that nature.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I would love, I'm going to be voting yes, so that's not a condition at, at this time, but that's just something I would love to see.
How many letters would you like? They're all supportive of?
Thirty-six. No, I'm joking.
Oh, my gosh.
Whatever you can get.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Because, again, you're, you're really fulfilling a real need out there, and I, and I want to support this, and I will, that would help me sleep better at night, or something like that. Thank you. Okay. A motion to close by Councilman Scowley. We have a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, are you in favor of reading this, sir? Number two.
File number SU-21905, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance approving a special use permit S-two, approving a daycare in, in RS sixty residential, single-family zoning district in the general vicinity of one-zero-seven-zero-one North Fourteenth Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and as more particularly described in Section one here, providing an effective date.
And if you can, Mr. Carlson, if you could just amend that to be, the address being one-seven, one-zero-seven-zero-one North Fifteenth Street, that's a typographical error.
Okay.
So if you could just make that amended, amended as part of your motion, that's fine. If, if you look at the staff report, did you want to make a comment as well? No? Okay. Is that, is that acceptable?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Carlson, I believe a second by Councilman Miranda from right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
The motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be on October third at nine-thirty a.m.
Okay, we move onward to item number three.
Mary Semeniego, item number three is REZ nineteen-seventy-eight. It's a rezoning request for the property at thirteen-eighteen West Lineball Avenue from RS fifty-two CN.
Good evening, councilmembers. David Hay again with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn, we remain in that university planning district for this next case. The subject site is also located within the Forest Hills neighborhood. There is transit available within the area. Hart's Route fourteen and forty-five serve that area. The site is not located within an evacuation zone, and the closest public recreation facility is the Forest Hills Park Community Center. Onto the aerial, you can see the subject's site is right here. This is Lineball, and this is Forest Hills Place, going north-south. The predominant area is single-family detached. There is some light commercial and uses as you start going down Lineball. This is Adams Middle School. This is actually the North Gate Baptist Church, right there. Onto the future land use map. This portion of Lineball, basically from Forest Hills Drive west, actually east, sorry, down Lineball, is that residential twenty, that's represented by the brown. To the south, further to the west, and to the north, in this kind of tan color, I guess, is, that's the residential ten, and then it, the density actually goes down as you go north. The yellow is the residential six. The green is the golf course up at Forest Hills, representing, representing the rec open space, future land use category, and the blue represents public, quasi-public uses. The applicant is seeking to go to that commercial neighborhood zoning district on this point-two-one acre subject site. Under the residential twenty future land use category, commercial uses are to meet the commercial locational criteria adopted within the comprehensive plan. Commercial uses under that res-twenty category are to have direct access under roadways classified as an arterial or collector. Access is available to the property from West Lineball, which is classified as a collector roadway, and thus, it's consistent with the commercial locational criteria. Overall, the proposed zoning is comparable and compatible with that existing development pattern found within this portion of the neighborhood. Directly to the north and west of the subject site are commercial office uses, and to the east is a church. Single-family detached residential is located directly to the south of the subject's site. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission staff finds the proposed rezoning consistent with the imagined twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Semeniego, here is a aerial and a zoning map. Again, this applicant is requesting to rezone the property to commercial neighborhood. This site was formerly known as CJ Tavern. It has been here since nineteen, it was there since nineteen forty-seven. Since then, the business has closed. Interestingly, along this intersection of Forest Hills and Lineball, it's kind of like a, a commercial node in this area. You've got a, an office directly to the west, across the street, there's another office in this location, this is a dental office. Here is a place of religious assembly. So there's a small cluster of kind of neighborhood-serving businesses and offices already established in this area. Again, they're asking to be rezoned to commercial neighborhood. The existing lot meets the dimensional criteria for the CN zoning district. I have provided in my staff report a list of all the permitted uses that would be allowed if this property were to be approved to the CN zoning district. There are no waivers being requested, and there's no site plan to review. The applicant is simply wanting to develop any CN use, provided they meet all applicable code requirements. Saying that, the Development Compliance Staff has reviewed this application and found it consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Applicent?
Counselor, good evening. I'm Michael Horner, fourteen-five-oh-two North Dale Mary Highway, Tampa, representing the applicant. I think Mary's report is quite thorough. This project, this structure has been in place since nineteen forty-seven. CJ's Tavern was quite a popular place for years. It's a good place to hang out. Unfortunately, it fell on some disrepair, and fell on some bad times. The prior owner gave up, left it. My client, Ms. Beckett, and her partner bought it. They stuck their neck out, they purchased it without having the legal-conforming zoning at CN, which is needed, and they have already gone through permitting. I, I wish Mary had shown additional photographs, and excuse me for not bringing my current ones, but they have done a phenomenal job. Entire stucco has been improved, it's been repainted, landscaping is being proposed, new windows. Inside, Lynn told me that it took a week to defog and decontaminate the inside. There was about a half-inch-thick nicotine-yellow layer. It took a substantial amount of time and money to redo this. It's been a mainstay, it's popular, it's been supported by the residents. It's no longer a tavern, they don't really have the interest in the tavern aspect, but they do want to contribute to the neighborhood, improve it, and bring it back to neighborhood-serving use. We've reached out to the neighborhood, no opposition. My surveyor works down the street, landscape architect has his office just to the east. It's just a great location, it's just exciting to see something come back, so happy to answer the questions.
Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder.
I'll wait and see if the public is here.
Okay, and I, I just have one, now, what, what type of a business is going to be used, just for my own?
They're rehabbing it right now, so it's open. It does have a commercial kitchen, so they have replaced. They're looking for tenants on the bottom floor. Actually, the top floor, used to be an office, or, excuse me, used to be two flats, now they're looking at converting that to professional office space on the second floor. It's only about a twenty-two hundred square foot structure.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. I mean, assuming there's nobody.
Okay, well, let's, anybody here to publicly comment on item number three? If so, please come forward. Councilman Dingfelder.
Evening, Mr. Horner.
Evening.
The, the neighborhood-serving commercial CN use has a lot of possibilities. I didn't, I'm looking for bar, but we must call it something else. What do we call it?
Heating and Drinking Establishment.
Heating and Drinking? I don't see.
We, we call it Bar Lounge.
Is that on the list?
Yes, sir.
Bar Lounge.
Do you know the alcohol-related uses?
So is that allowed in the CN?
Um, no. If I may, no, it is not allowed use in the CN zoning district.
Okay. So what, I know this isn't a PD, we don't really have a picture of the property per se, but what's, what's the parking situation like generally there, Mike?
Parking is open right now. They're replacing gravel, they're doing outside vegetation, but it's an open-drop curb along the western side Albany and along Lineball Avenue, so it's not channelized. They bought it as-is. It's a very small site, and to Dingfelder, it's only point-two-one acres, so that's why they cannot do a whole lot of trip-intensive uses in there for the parking issue.
And, and what's, I know that Mary mentioned other activities on that corner. How about next door on Lineball?
Which?
Or on Forest Hills, for that matter.
Yeah, there's churches northeast, we have a small office building to the west.
Yeah, that's across Forest Hills? But I guess I'm thinking to the, on Lineball, to the east?
To the east, we have EDS's office, Echistics Design Studio, we have Smith Surveying, and then we have some other scattered uses. There's a small, I think it might be a daycare center that I saw assigned.
And how about going south on Forest Hills?
It's primarily single-family detached.
So the back store neighbor is, is single-family?
It is, and very strong supporters, I might add.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Okay, ma'am. Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Miranda, sir, can you take item three?
I don't know. Three, file number REZ nineteen-seventy-eight. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An unauthorized rezoning property in the general vicinity of thirteen-eighteen West Lineball Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section one for zoning district classification, RS fifty, residential, single-family, the CN commercial neighborhood, providing an effective date. It's based on the, that the petition has met the burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence of the development conditions shown on the site is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan City Code. And I know the place, although I don't drink, I've been there a couple of times, having sandwich after we played golf, when I used to golf. We quit going there because I used to win all the time. That's not true.
And before we go, Mr. Dingfelder, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman, did you have something to say, sir?
Yeah, two things. Speaking of golf, one time I made the mistake of golfing with Citro, and he's very good, so don't golf with him. Yeah.
I didn't know.
Before, before, before we were in office together. Okay, so I, I guess I don't, I don't see any particular reason to not support this. I will point out, for council's edification, that medical marijuana dispensary is an allowable use under the CN at that corner, should it be approved. But anyway, that's all I had to say.
Well...
Well, maybe we'll ask that in the second hearing.
Yeah, well said. Thank you for pointing that out, sir. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, I believe that Councilman Citro's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be on October third at nine-thirty a.m.
Be ready to answer that question, sir. Thank you.
Mary, item number five?
Yes, ma'am.
Mary Semeniego, REZ nineteen-eighty-three. It's a rezoning request for two-one-zero-two West Waters Avenue from commercial general, RS fifty, to commercial intensive.
Good evening, councilmembers. David Hay again with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn, we remain in that university planning district for this next case. More specifically, this subject site is located within the Lowry Park Central neighborhood. There is transit within the area on Waters. Hart Route sixteen connects the subject site to the Yukon and Northwest Transfer Centers, and the subject site is located within an evacuation zone E. Here we have the aerial. This is North Albany, going north-south, Waters. You can see, this section of Waters has a lot of commercial uses. There's apartments directly to the north. There are single-family detached directly to the east of the subject site and to the south. This is a large Tico substation. Onto the future land use map. The subject site and all these properties in red are that Community Commercial thirty-five, which allow consideration up to that CI zoning district to the north, where those apartments were, in this kind of lavender color, I guess. That's the Community Mixed Use thirty-five, that allows up to CG, commercial general uses. To the south, in that tan color, is all the residential ten, which is predominantly single-family detached. The applicant is requesting to rezone this subject, this subject site, which is two-point-one-five acres, to that commercial intensive zoning district. The Community Commercial thirty-five designation is present along this portion. The southern portion of the subject site interfaces parcels with that residential ten, which have been developed as single-family detached homes. Planning Commission staff encourages the applicant to appropriately buffer the subject site from the single-family homes to minimize impacts on the surrounding residents and ensure compatibility with, with the surrounding neighborhood. That's based on Land Use Policy fifteen-point-two-point-four. Overall, through the assessment of the character of the area and the policy direction within the Comprehensive Plan, Planning Commission staff has determined that the proposed rezoning is comparable and compatible with the Lowry Park Central neighborhood, and it does recommend that this rezoning request be found consistent with the provisions of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Mary Semeniego, again, they're requesting a rezoning to commercial intensive. The property is two-point-one-five acres. It's currently occupied by warehouse use, formerly the Tampa Tent Rental, which was constructed in nineteen fifty-four. As David indicated, it's in a land use category which seeks to transition properties up to the commercial intensive zoning district for which the applicant is requesting. Here is a zoning map, that you can see the surrounding areas. David had indicated, there's apartment buildings in the RM twenty-four zoning district to the north, on the north side of West Waters Avenue. The subject property in is red, there are small warehousing and office uses directly to the west, as well as an office used directly to the east, across Albany Avenue, all within the commercial general zoning district. And then it goes to the RS fifty, single-family zoning district, across Albany to the west, I'm sorry, to the east and to the south. There is no site plan to review if this project were to be approved and redeveloped. The entire site would have to be in compliance through a change-of-use process through permitting and comply with all of the applicable land development code requirements. All of the potential uses that are allowed in the CI zoning district are listed in your staff report. I would remind city council that when you approve a Euclidean rezoning to a specific zoning district, you are considering it, any, any use that's allowed or permissible within that zoning district could be developed on this site. Saying that, the Development Review and Compliance Staff did find this consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. Do you have any specific questions for me at this time?
Any questions from the board? Councilmember Dingfelder?
Planning Commission staff mentioned about buffering, you know, and I can't remember the term that you used, David, encourage, encourage buffering, or, or something along those lines. So, let's say the, the, the project was redeveloped, and looking at the aerial, you know, let's say they start clearing out some trees and adding buildings, and, and commercial CI is, it's as, by its name, is commercial intensive, so there's a lot of potential heavy uses there. Is there a buffering requirement along that North Albany strip in front of, in front of those single-family homes?
Yes, if the side or rear commercial development is across a public right-of-way from a single-family detached dwelling, it's either a six-foot-high masonry wall constructed along the property line, or a five-foot fully landscape buffer.
I, I missed the five-foot?
Five-foot landscape buffer, which is a combination of trees and shrubs.
Okay.
So one or the other.
Okay. And that would only kick in if they started changing things or adding buildings, or that sort of thing?
Right, any change of use requires compliance with, with landscaping and parking and stormwater all projects.
But they can continue to do what they're doing?
They can continue to operate as a warehouse use, correct?
And I missed the beginning. You, you said very quickly what the operation is currently, and it's been there a long time.
It's Tampa Tent Rental, constructed in nineteen fifty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from board members? No? Applicent?
Chairman of council, Michael Horner, in fourteen-five-oh-two North Dale Mary Highway, Tampa, three-three-six-one-eight, representing the applicant. I have been sworn. Good questions. My clients have owned this property for decades. It has numerous warehouse structures that are...
are non-conforming because CG allowed them at one time. CG no longer allows warehouses. These structures are not in good shape, not in good condition. There are multiple support structures that are equally in poor shape. My client intends to build one, maybe two, brand-new warehouses. It is the Tampa Tent Rental operation. They've been a good tenant. They now want to consolidate their operation. In terms of single-family buffering, we have to go through the redevelopment. We have to go through site review. We have to meet all the buffer matrix criteria for the landscaping. We are the end cap to that CC thirty-five. And I might also add, my client owns the four residential RS fifty zone lots to the south, so he is not only a vested commercial interest holder, he's also residential. So anyone who's going to be concerned about that interface, my client has those houses and owns them and has invested substantially in them. We're on Waters Avenue. I just realized, council, that I referenced Albany Avenue in the last case, not Forest Hills. I had this on my mind, it was the last one I looked at, so let the record reflect that the prior case actually was on Forest Hills and not Albany, which this case is at.
We, we sold out. We ignored you. How's that work?
Thanks for the...
We forgive you.
Thank you, thank you. My clients reached out to the neighbors. We only had one call. Just wanted to make sure that they were following rules and regs. I don't think there was any opposition. This has unanimous support, consistent with the Planning Commission policies. We happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? No?
One other quick question. Egress and ingress, I know, again, it's not a PD, so it's not exactly like we can control it, but what is the current egress and ingress to the, to the operation?
Waters Avenue is the primary. There's one driveway to Albany. That may or may not proceed with their new development.
There, there is a driveway to Albany going out to the single-family?
There's a six-foot wall the way through, and then there's one driveway. Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Is anyone here to publicly comment on item number five? If so, please come forward.
Quick questions?
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
Mary, in regard to, now, this, I got, I guess it's not exactly buffering, but in regard to that egress-ingress question along Albany, is there any limitation on the CI as related to those single-family homes for that residential street?
Jonathan, is that section of Albany, do you know what the classification is, please, sir? Albany south of Waters?
Jonathan Scott, trash station finding.
Is it a local street?
That's a local street.
Okay, yes, thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. The code says that commercial traffic does not by right have access to local residential streets. So in order to get a, a new driveway cut, if it were to go through the change of use process, they would have to come in for a PD or some sort of technical design exception through transportation to get a driveway cut.
So when you say a new driveway, he, Michael indicated that's an existing driveway?
Correct.
But if there's a change of use, you'd consider it a new driveway, or?
Correct. So if it does, the warehouse can, the existing warehouse can keep the driveway, even if the rezoning is approved. If a new warehouse moves in, they can keep that driveway. If a, a medical marijuana use goes in, that is a change of use, they have to go through a reevaluation of all, it's on my brain. It has to go through a reevaluation of all driveway cuts, then the provision that you can't have a commercial cut on a local residential street would kick in.
But that, okay, I get that then, but that doesn't apply the buffering, what you said earlier, then?
No, it's two different code requirements.
So if they put a new warehouse on there, then that will kick in the buffering, the buffering requirement?
If they put a new, if they construct, if they...
That's what he said. They said they're going to tear down the old warehouse and build a new warehouse.
So yes, one, another provision in the code is that if you have major reconstruction, then all buffering, parking, and/or landscape provisions shall apply.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we had a motion to close by whom?
Chairman, if I can just...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Just to clarify that, my client is aware of that retrofit requirement. They're prepared to upgrade this site. It does not meet any current standards, and that driveway will be eliminated, so will access to Waters Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion to close, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Councilman Citro, do you, sir, mind taking item number five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In case file number REZ nineteen dash eighty-three, I move for an ordinance being presented for first reading, an ordinance re-zoning property in the general vicinity of twenty-one oh two West Waters Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, CG Commercial General and, excuse me, classifications, CG Commercial General and RS fifty residential single-family to CI Commercial Intensive, providing an effective date, as the petitioner's, petitioner has met the burden of proof to provide competent substantial evidence in a hearing that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive pan, uh, plan with no waivers, and it is in a mixed-use area.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be on October third at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, thank you. Item number six, please.
Mary Seminiego, item number six is REZ nineteen ninety. It's a rezoning request for the property at three zero zero eight West Julia Street from RS sixty-two RM twenty-four.
Good evening, council members. David Hay with your planning commission staff. We move down to the South Tampa Planning District for this next case. The subject site is located within the Bay Shore beautiful neighborhood. There is transit within the area. The closest stop is at McDill and El Prado. Let's see, the closest public recreation facility is Fred Ball Park, and the subject site is located within a Level evacuation zone B. Onto the aerial, you could see, here's the subject site. This is Julia. Julia mostly has town homes. This is where the Colonnade Restaurant was, which is now that around twenty-story tower. There's all, it's either multifamily or town homes, all within this area here. The single-family detached really doesn't kick in until the parcels on Julia circle on east-west of McDill Avenue. Onto the future land use map, this is the subject site right in the center. This is McDill. This is the crosstown. Of course, this is Bay Shore. This brown color is the Residential thirty-five. That allows up to thirty-five dwelling units per acre. Where the Colonnade is in the dark brown, that's, and up there also, that's the Residential eighty-three. That's the most intense residential district in all of the city of Tampa. Further, it, the density starts going down as you get down near El Prado. This is the Residential twenty, and then where that single-family detached picked up, this is the Residential ten in that tan. Of course, the blue represents public, semi-public. The, the applicant is seeking to rezone to that RM twenty-four on the point eleven acre site. The Residential thirty-five future land use designation is present. Multifamily is encouraged within the Residential thirty-five future land use category to provide a higher density where greater residential development is desired. That's based on land use policy nine point six point three. Overall, the Residential thirty-five future land use category encourages compact, higher-density development that is comparable with the surrounding development pattern. The zoning, the requested zoning district is, would be consistent with those policies. This portion of West Julia Street on the parcels with a future land use designation of Residential thirty-five, they have an existing density of thirteen point nine units per acre. The proposed rezoning would allow consideration of up to three dwelling units on the subject site based on the site acreage, with an overall density of twenty-seven units per acre. This is compatible with the underlying future land use category of Residential thirty-five. It would not alter the character or development pattern under that, within this section of West Julia Street. Based on those considerations, Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed rezoning be found consistent with the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, David. Mary Seminiego, again, the property is located at three zero zero eight West Julia Street. They're requesting a rezoning to RM twenty-four. After the notice went out, the applicant indicated staff that they're requesting to amend their request to go down from RM twenty-four down to RM eighteen legally, and you can ask your attorney or you can ask the city's attorney, you are allowed to consider a reduction of request of intensity going from the RM twenty-four to the RM eighteen as a reduction in the intensity request of the zoning district. So you can make that change at this first reading. Saying that, the square footage of the lot is five thousand square feet. It meets the minimum standards for both zoning districts, the RM eighteen, which is not the current request. Given the density factor of the RM eighteen and the five thousand square foot size of the property, a maximum of two dwelling units could be developed on the site. Any development that were to occur would have to comply with all applicable Land Development Code requirements, and there's no site plan to review. There are no waivers to consider, and the Development Review and Compliance Staff did find this consistent.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, thank you very much. Applicant?
Good evening, council. Steve McColony, representing the petitioner. As the staff has pointed out, the land use is a RES thirty-five, which was, allows the thirty-five units to the acre. It's five thousand square feet. This is a area that's under a lot of transition. You have an extremely high-density, high-rise of just half a block away at Bay Shore and Julia. There are no waivers being requested, and none would be allowed. So our feeling was that the RM twenty-five, in the event that some subsequent owner purchased the property, could develop three units, that, that was not where we were going with this development. We felt that two units was far more appropriate, and that's why we changed the request from RM twenty-four to RM eighteen. So just for the record, we're respectfully requesting RM eighteen on this parcel. It was found to be consistent by the city staff and the Hillsborough County Planning Commission, and we believe it is sensitive to the other surrounding developments. As they pointed out, it's surrounded by either townhouses or a little bit further to the east by high-density Bay Shore development. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but we're respectfully requesting your approval to go to RM eighteen.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant on item number six? Okay, thank you, sir. If anyone is here to publicly comment on item number six, please come forward. Three minutes a person. And Mr. Shelby?
I also like to put on the record that we have checked with the legal staff and the city staff, and that the request is appropriate to be able to change that at the hearing.
And, Mr. Chairman, towards that end, I believe it would be appropriate at this time to accept the petition as requested and accept that motion to amend the application to an RM eighteen.
Okay.
Do that by motion first.
Okay.
I'm going to adopt the, or the change to RM eighteen from twenty-four.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Before you close, I'd like to inquire of Ms. Moore, does that, is it permissible then to read the ordinance with the RM eighteen at this point and have the changes between first and second reading, or do you require that tonight?
I, excuse me, Kristen Moore, Legal Department, I have reviewed the ordinance. The only change that needs to be made in the title of the ordinance, which is what has to be read this evening, is the change of the number twenty-four to eighteen. So if the council member that reads this ordinance could read the eighteen, and we will get a corrected ordinance down here for you immediately.
Oh, okay, immediately then it is.
We'll, we'll have it, we'll have it done tonight, but if you could just read it that way.
So we can actually move along then and pass it as suggested?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a motion to close?
Some who?
We have a motion to close by Councilman Escalco, a second by Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Escalco, sir, do you mind taking item number six?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. I have an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of three thousand eight West Julia Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS sixty, residential six, single-family to RM eighteen, residential multifamily, providing an effective date because the petitioner has met its burden of proof to provide competent and substantial evidence that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, and also that it is found consistent per our City of Tampa staff report. Do I have a second?
We have a motion by Councilman Escalco, a second by Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council.
The motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be on October third at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Crewe. We next move to item number seven.
Mary Seminiego, item number seven is REZ nineteen ninety-three. It's a rezoning request for the property located at thirty fifteen, West San Nicholas Street from CG to RS fifty.
Good evening, council members. David Hay, again, is it my voice? Excuse me. We remain in the South Tampa Planning District, more specifically the Palmasia neighborhood. The subject site is located within a Level C evacuation zone. The closest park is, public park is Palmasia Park, which is located approximately two blocks to the east.
Mr. Chair, just a point of order?
Yes, sir.
Before you get going, this parcel is within about two blocks, about five houses as the crow flies from my house. So I just wanted to disclose that. It's, I mean, it's in my, it's in my little neighborhood. As a matter of fact, I was driving down that street yesterday. I saw the sign, and then I was continuing down the street, and this giant limb, I know this sounds crazy, this giant limb of a tree fell down, was this big, and it, and it grazed my car. It was right there at that corner. But, but anyway, that's, that's neither here nor there.
With the link, with the link?
Fortunately, I, I, it missed me, so I'm, I'm here to tell about this.
Would that experience cause you?
Would that experience cause me trauma?
Would it cause you to do anything other than be fair and impartial in this case?
No, I can be fair and impartial. I don't know these folks who are doing it, and I'm not within the circle.
Okay, so you're not within the zoning area. You have no financial stake in the outcome for better or worse relating to the matter that's before council. It doesn't affect you financially in any sort of way. Is that correct?
True, correct.
And, and you have not been noticed. Therefore, it is my professional opinion that under Florida statutes, you are obligated to participate so long as you can be fair and impartial and listen to the evidence and base it on the competent substantial evidence in the record. Is that true?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much.
And I'm, I'm never going to be a tree hugger again. Has this tree tried to get me?
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next, we move on to the aerial. You could see, here's the subject site. This is West San Nicholas Street. This is McDill. There are some commercial uses you could see on this portion of McDill. There's also some office uses scattered throughout. There are some townhomes that you can see scattered, but the predominant area is single-family detached, especially to the east of the subject site. This is the Palmasia Country Club. Here we are with the future land use map. Again, this is McDill Avenue, San Nicholas Street. It's hard to see, but a portion of the site, the western, a small western portion of the site, does have some of that Community Mixed Use thirty-five on it. The rest of the site is this brown color, which is Residential twenty. The tan color further to the east is that Residential ten, and then the yellow across on the west side of McDill is Residential six. Those are the houses that back up to the golf course. There's a commercial node located to the south, basically anchored at Bay to Bay and McDill. This red is all the Community Commercial thirty-five. And as you move further east toward Bay Shore, the density does go up with some RES twenty, RES eighty-three, and RES fifty. The applicant is proposing to rezone this point one five acre site from the Commercial General to the Residential Single Family fifty to recognize an existing single-family detached home on, on the property. This portion of West San Nico Street excluding the subject site has a density of eight point three units per acre. Proposed rezoning would allow for the consideration of one single-family resident at an overall density of six point six units. This request is below the existing block density and the maximum of twenty dwelling units per acre that could be considered under that Residential twenty and that small portion of Community Mixed Use thirty-five.
of community mixed-use 35. Therefore, the proposed rezoning will not alter the character or development pattern of this portion of the Palmasia neighborhood. Based on those considerations, the planning commission staff finds proposed rezoning consistent with the provisions of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Mary Saminiego, the applicant again is requesting to rezone this property from the commercial general CG to RS50. It contains a single-family house built in 1925. The lot is approximately 6,500 square feet, which meets the dimensional requirements for the RS50 zoning district. Under the current zoning district of commercial general, the, a single-family detached house is permissible but to special use 1, which is a special use approval required with a site plan approval at staff level. The applicant, and he can speak more directly to this, newly acquired the property due to lending institutions and title and that sort of thing. The intent is to rezone the property to a zoning district where a single-family house is a buy right allowed use as opposed to being a special use 1. So the applicant is requesting to downzone the property to RS50, which would allow one detached single-family house, which is existing, buy right, and requires no special approval. The surrounding area to the north and to the south, as you can see, are single-family houses. It is along the commercial corridor of CG uses along South MacDill Avenue. There is no site plan due review. It's not a plan development, no waivers to consider. Staff did find this consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code, staff being the development and review and compliance staff, to downzone this property to RS50 to retain its permissible use as RS50 for detached single-family house as opposed to allowing for commercial general development. Primarily also, you can see, I will note on the zoning map, the commercial general line comes down and then it jogs out for this property. So if this property were to be rezoned to RS50, it would continue the symmetrical pattern of commercial general zoning along MacDill. Do you have any questions for me about this application?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant, please.
Good evening. Larry Prince, I am the company Common Royalty Properties LLC. We purchased this property knowing back in May that it was a commercial with the intent to change this back to a residential 50, as Mary eloquently put. Sorry, let me start again. Sorry, I almost got hit with a tree going down the street. In dealing with lending institutions and mortgage brokers, something like that, they are highly recommend for resale value to have this returned to residential. They brought up the scenario that the home burned down. Would the insurance company now require this home to be built back as just commercial only, or would they not honor the claim based on that it's on this commercial and not put a residential home back in the spot? So in order to make my life and future easier, I decided to go ahead and request that this property be rezoned to residential.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. If anybody is here to speak on item number seven for public comment, please come forward. We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Goode. All in favor? Any opposed? Councilman Goode, do you mind, sir, taking item number seven?
Good evening, Councilmember. File number REZ 19-93, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3015 West San Nicholas Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification CG, commercial general to RS50 residential single-family, providing effective date.
And, okay, we have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor? Any opposed?
The motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be on October 3rd at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Crew. We move onward to item number 10.
Mary Saminiego, Plan and Design and Development Coordination. Item number 10 is REZ 1966. It's a rezoning request for a plan development for multifamily residential with a bonus provision agreement pursuant to 27-140 of the City of Tampa Land Development Code, increase the density from eight to nine dwelling units.
Good evening, councilmembers. David Hay again with your planning commission staff. I have been sworn, we're in the central Tampa Planning District for this case. There is transit along Kennedy Boulevard, which is located just to the north of the subject site. The, the subject site is located within a Level C evacuation zone, and I know it's very small, but the closest public recreation facility is Snow Park, based on the measurement. I don't know how much recreation can occur there, but you could stand there, I guess, and look at the fountain, maybe. Here we.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. What games can you play in this water?
Relax and watch the water, I guess. Here, here we have the aerial. This is Willow, of course. This is fire station number three to the north. That's at the southeast corner of Kennedy and Willow. This is Cleveland, and of course, this is the Leroy Salmon. You can see that there are a mixture, there's mostly offices to the west, there's multifamily and townhomes predominantly to the south and to the east. And then, of course, you get, this is the University of Tampa up here, and this is going to be Tampa General's new campus that you all approved a couple of years back. Onto the future land use map. The subject site and all these properties within the brown are that residential 35. It immediately goes up into, as you move further west down Cleveland, goes up to the community commercial 35. That allows that CI zoning district. And then the properties, including the portion of the fire station, all this pink color, that is urban mixed-use 60. And then down on Platte, you have the community mixed-use 35. That allows them up to a CG zoning district. The, let's see. Under that residential 35, applicants get up to a 30 buy right, and then to utilize up to the 35, they have to go into that development agreement that Mary had mentioned. Based on that, with the applicant is requesting up to nine units, that that ninth unit is triggering the need for the development agreement. The Tampa Comprehensive Plan encourages the development and retention of diversity of housing types to meet the needs of Tampa's present and future populations. The Comprehensive Plan promotes, this is another that we had discussions with staff, in multifamily buildings, there is a comp plan policy that talks about they really should have some sort of door oriented to the public right-of-way. The applicant has worked, they have included a door. When it originally came in, there wasn't a door on the Willow side. They have included that as part of their design. So that would meet the policy direction in the plan regarding multifamily and the orientation of that multifamily. Overall, the plan development furthers many of the housing policies in the Tampa Comprehensive Plan and is consistent with that long-range development pattern encouraged under the residential 35 future land use category. Based on that, the planning commission staff finds proposed rezoning consistent with the provisions of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Saminiego, again, this is a plan development request. I'll show you, the property is currently vacant, as David indicated. It's on South Willow. Here are the railway tracks. Here is air-conditioned storage. There's a law office direct kind of catty corner to the property. To the north is a single-family house, and then to the Kennedy Boulevard is further to the north, right off the screen. And these are a series of apartment uses with multiple dwelling units in each one. Here is the site plan that the applicant is proposing. Again, they are proposing nine dwelling units within the three-story building. Based on current code provisions, the entire site is .28 acres. The proposed building is 11,600 square feet and does have the main pedestrian entrance off of Willow Avenue. The proposed setbacks are to the north, seven feet, to the south, four feet, to the east is 22 feet, and because of the stairwells, to the west is a one-foot setback proposed. And the max, proposed maximum building height is 45 feet. Based on the number of dwelling units and the combination of bedrooms, a total of 20 parking spaces is required, and the applicant is proposing 12. That 40% parking reduction is subject to City Council waiver approval. Transportation staff and planning, design, and development coordination staff found the 40% parking reduction request inconsistent. Vehicle access to the property ingress will be off of South Willow Avenue, one-way, accessing the surface parking spaces, and then utilizing the improved alley to exit the property, as well as access the, some of the parking spaces to the east of the building. As we indicated, they are asking for a bonus provision by right under the comprehensive plan. They only get eight dwelling units. They're asking for one additional dwelling unit, subject to a development agreement that has been reviewed by the city legal department. The density bonus payment will be trued up at permitting, but it's approximately $16,967.11. That improvement will provide for anticipated off-site impacts for the increased density through payment into a capital improvement program or another similar surrounding area project. As far as the waivers being requested, those are found on page one. The first waiver is to section 27-283.7, again, to reduce the parking from 20 spaces down to 12, which is a 40% parking reduction. The second waiver is to 27-283-12. They require backup distance for a parking space is 24 feet because of the design of the project. Only a 19-foot backup distance is proposed for these, let me see, five parking spaces. So that's the second waiver. A third waiver request to 27-284 is to contribute to the Tree Trust Fund for mitigation of required trees. As you can see, there's very limited green space on the subject property, based on the tree table for the trees being removed, as well as there are trees that are required to be installed. There's simply not enough room on-site to plant all of those trees. So they're asking for a waiver to put money into the Tree Trust Fund for the mitigation trees. The fourth waiver being requested, 27-284.4, to reduce the use buffer to the north property line from five to three feet. This is a single-family house. The code states that for buffering purposes, a multifamily development adjoining a single-family detached development requires a five-foot landscape buffer. The applicant is requesting a waiver to go down to three feet. That waiver approval is subject to an lieu payment at time of permitting. And the last waiver that's being requested is, the code requires for multifamily development less than six stories. Each dwelling unit is required 350 square feet of green space. Given the proposed nine units, a total of 3,150 square feet of green space is required minimum, in addition to the green space for the parking lot. And the applicant is requesting to reduce that down to 1,408 square feet of multifamily green space, again, with payment and lieu at time of permitting. There are several revisions by planning, design, and development coordination if this were to be approved between first and second reading, so please make sure that you include the revision sheet in your motion. If you do approve it, there are changes from transportation, as well as natural resources and stormwater. But overall, the development, the development review and compliance staff did find this inconsistent. I will reference you to the planning, design, and development coordination findings of facts on page two, three, and four of your staff report relating to compatibility, natural elements, basically because of the 40% parking reduction and the lack of green space for multifamily provision, as well as lack of green space to plant required and mitigation trees, with consideration that the applicant is requesting a density bonus to ask for additional dwelling units that they would normally be allowed. Saying that, do you have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions? Councilman Dinkoff?
So in regard to the, this density bonus program, you said that they would pay into the city, something in the neighborhood, would you say $16,000, $18,000?
Approximately $17,000.
And I remember we had this discussion, there was another project about a mile north of here, where they were going to make specific improvements in the adjacent right-of-way. I don't know if it was your project or not. They were going to make specific improvements in the adjacent right-of-way to add parking, on-street parking, and that sort of thing, but immediate improvements in that, in that area.
Correct.
Here, when, when you were speaking to it, I didn't hear any improvements that were going to help the immediate local condition.
Kristen Moore, would you like to address what the provision is paying for?
Well, Kristen Moore, Legal Department, under section 27-140 of your code, which is our bonus provision section, it has several options for developers about what they would like to contribute to. They, they have a multitude of options from undergrounding utilities to providing on-street parking, providing affordable housing, and then one of the options, and tends to be somewhat of a popular one, is to contribute to the multimodal district. And so that is a cash contribution to the multimodal district. They have identified a particular improvement in the area for it to go to. It's the Howard Avenue, DeKalb Avenue, and DeSoto Avenue intersection improvement, CIP number 1001544.
Howard and, Howard and where?
It is Howard Avenue, DeKalb Avenue, and DeSoto Avenue intersection improvements is the capital improvement project that they have proposed contributing to.
Which is a good, a good mile away from the Howard Soho Entertainment area. The reason I mention it is the objections, the two letters of objection that we received that are part of the record, and I'm sure the petitioner has seen it, speak to parking concerns. And here, they're asking for a significant parking waiver, X number of spaces, it looks like four or five of them are compact spaces on the back alley. And I'm just wondering, you know, what, if anything, the city is going to do with that money that might mitigate the immediate impacts to the, to the parking concerns of the neighbors?
Providing on-street parking, as I recall, is one of the options within 27-140.
Yeah, but I don't know, that, that section of Willow, I think.
Well, that, I was about to say, if, if it was, you know, technically feasible from a transportation standpoint.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Moore?
Councilman Goode.
Any further questions for staff?
Ms. Moore?
Oh.
How does council play a role when these bonus provisions have an adverse effect to those communities?
So the, the way that the Comprehensive Plan is set up for many of the comp plan categories is that you have an entitlement to a certain amount of density or intensity, and that is allowed as a right. If you go, if you wish to go further and provide additional density or additional intensity in the case of commercial projects, you are required to make some sort of community benefit as a result of that. And so that is, the way 27-140 is set up, is it has a exact mathematical formula of an offset for that additional density and intensity, and some additional benefit that you were providing in there. And as I mentioned, there's a variety of different ways and options to account for, you know, differing conditions and what those issues may be. So that's, that's the way that that is set up in our code.
Anyone else? Councilman Citron?
Ms. Moore, please come travel too far away. In the review of the site plan and zoning district application, we have. In the review of the site planning zoning district application, we have many requirements we're asking for. Says provide a procedure in which can relate the type, design, and layout of residential and non-residential development. I've just seen site plans. Do, does that have to include elevation plans or building plans?
I do, I do not believe that our code requires that in this instance, but I'll let Ms. Samini go address that.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mary Samini Ego for the record. Yes, there should be building elevations included in your site plan packet. Building floor plans are not required.
Is there elevations in anybody else's packet? Paul Attani? Ah, yes, they are. Thank you very much.
Anything? Anything further with this?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else from counsel? Okay, applicant?
Good evening, William Malloy, three-twenty-five South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. We do realize we're asking for a lot of waivers in this planned development. And if it's not apparent, the intent of the project really is to provide a higher-end of off-campus private housing to support the University of Tampa. This isn't meant as a traditional multi-family development. It's meant as, I don't want to say student housing, but that's the market that we're chasing right now. To that end, waivers wanted to really both deal with transportation issues in the form of transportation by traditional automobiles. And one or two are the, the parking and the aisle width. We're asking for reduction in the requisite parking and the traditional aisle width for the drive. As you can see by the, the overheads and the, you know, the areas that were provided, due its, due to its proximity to UT, as well as a bevy of other retail such as Walmart, there's a neighborhood market just to the northwest, fast food, coffee, breakfast, law offices, churches, mini-storage right across the street, and so on, all within blocks. The idea of walkability is a tremendous selling point for this project. It's not to be an automobile-driven development. And also, as I'm sure you know, in two thousand and nineteen, and especially in South Tampa, traditional transportation is and increasingly will be mitigated by involving forms of delivery. We have ride chairs, ride services. We have city-provided alternatives such as bicycle rentals and scooter services, which seem to have taken over South Tampa. I live just across the Platte Street Bridge, and there are scooters everywhere, love them or hate them. They get dumped in my front yard occasionally. We do hope that Tampa, which is embracing these alternative forms of transportation, could begin to account for them in evolving developments such as this one. Again, this is a student-driven development. It's not a traditional multi-family one. Our builder, who's here to speak if need be, wouldn't contemplate such a development if he couldn't account for a parking space for every tenant. That's not marketable, but that's not what this project is about. In this case, I know that requesting the additional density with the bonus and all these waivers appears greedy, but it's not, it's reality. It's necessary, it's student housing for the university across the street. This segues into waiver number five, which is the green space issue. And again, this isn't contemplated to be traditional. We sacrifice green space to get to the parking number we're at, which is, you know, obviously still low, given that sacrifice. But the project won't suffer from it. I hope you see the elevations now, it's a good-looking building. It's not far off from the Bleaker, which is right down the street off Cleveland. It's completely in line with the neighborhood of multi-family development in South Tampa. And really, it's not going to look anything like that little patch of street between the crosstown and Kennedy Boulevard on Willow. That's not a tremendously pretty line of, you know, sight for residential development. Waivers three and four are financial issues which we're more than happy to deal with, no problem there whatsoever. So then, just for the record, we believe the waiver requests are very unique to the design and purpose of the proposed development, that they don't substantially interfere with the rights of any other property owners, that they are in harmony with, and serve the general intent of the city of Tampa, its codes, and most importantly, its comprehensive plan, which supports requested density, and that it will result in substantial justice being done, and considering both public benefit to the city, to the university, and to the various interests of the city of Tampa. With that, thank you, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I also have the owner and the builder here to answer any as well.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfield?
Yeah, I did the, the division, nine units for eleven thousand six hundred total square feet is twelve hundred and eighty-eight square feet per unit, assuming they're all the same, which, in light of the location at Willow there, it's jumped out at me. I said, aha, student housing.
Sure.
Not necessarily a bad thing. Okay, I'm sure if, if he's gone to all this effort and, and wants to build it, there must be a market for it. That's, that's great. My concern, I don't necessarily have a big concern about the various other waivers, but the parking waiver does concern me greatly. I recall many years ago, going to Gainesville, in my first year, I didn't have a car. But the next year I did, when I was a sophomore. My mother's sixty-five in power, I was hot to trot, so. But anyway, the point is, you've got twenty-seven bedrooms, okay? You've got three, three bedrooms, nine apartments, you've got twenty-seven bedrooms. To me, very likely, you might have twenty-seven students living there. Twenty-seven students, the requirement, so arguably, they might have twenty-seven cars. It looks to me like UT students have more money than Gators. But arguably, maybe, okay, so you might have twenty-seven cars, you know, but that, you're down to, the city requirement is twenty cars, but at the end of the day, you're offering twelve parking spaces. Now, I agree, those kids might not be using those cars, you know, day in and day out. Yeah, that's probably easier for them to jump on their bike and go to school, or, you know, grab an Uber, or to go wherever they need to go. But even so, if they own a car, then we got issues. Gives me a little heartburn about that. So what I wondered about was, and I don't like to build people's property or design them, but why not park, why didn't y'all park some cars underneath? Then you'd have plenty to park.
Mr. Dingfield, for the record, I'm a double Gator undergrad in high school.
There you go.
And I understand, I understand the parking in Gainesville very, very well. Parking underneath would, it, it's not something we care to entertain. It'd be expensive, it wouldn't make the student housing anymore, it'd make it something else.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, clearly you could address, you wouldn't be asking for the first parking waiver if you were, if you just lifted that building up one more story and parked underneath. I recognize there's additional expense, fire codes, I'm sure, and all sorts of things like that, but you wouldn't be asking for a parking waiver.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I got right now.
Anybody else?
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll echo some of those comments. I, the, the parking waiver in that location, you know, does trouble me. I, even though it's going to be student housing, there are going to be a lot of students there who have their own vehicles, foreseeably. And, you know, it's certainly something that troubles me. Why don't you build a law firm there? We don't have enough lawyers in that area. I'm just joking.
I believe it's inundated with law firms in the area, mine included.
I'm joking, I'm joking. Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody here to publicly comment on item number ten? So come forward, three minutes a person.
My, excuse me, Chris Angelo, I'm the president of Seven Gills Realty, and I own one, or Seven Gills Realty owns one-one-one South Newport, the property just the east of this one. Thank you so much.
There you go.
Thank you. So, so this is my apartment complex. I got a text from the owner of the, um, the Hyde Park Tea Cottage, and she was in a panic on Friday, so I met her on Saturday. She had a heat stroke, um, I had a heat stroke on Sunday, so she couldn't make it. So I told her I'd attend. And back in when I bought the complex, parking wasn't an issue. They built Hyde Park Townhomes in two thousand and one, it became an issue. And here's the Hyde Park Tea House. These, these two houses are the ones that are no longer there where the, the project is. So in two thousand and eight, they put a big, I think, four-unit condo complex there, and we lost more parking because the curb cuts are so wide, so it became even a bigger problem. And then they asked me to paint my building, so I painted it. And then they built a fence right here where my dumpster was. And I had to move the dumpster back, I guess, past the alleyway into these guys', close to these guys' parcels. So the city contacted me last year and said, you've got to have these. We put them in the front, but obviously because of the parking problem, they couldn't dump those trash cans. So now they're in the back against these guys' parcel, which is a problem, right? I don't know what I'm going to do now to dump the trash. And then finally, there, there I get in a row. Finally, the biggest concern is the same that you guys addressed. As you drive through off of Willow, if you reduce the parking, it's going to be a big problem. This is the alleyway, making these reduced parking spaces is actually where those trash cans are sitting. It's actually, they're actually sitting in the alleyway. I didn't put them there, the city did, because they didn't know where else to put them. Because when they put them in the front of my building, they couldn't pick up the trash. So I know I got a problem there, I got to figure out myself on my parcel. But I really am concerned about, about all the traffic flowing through this, behind my complex, as well as the lack of parking. Because we're, we're tight now. And we're eighteen, or we're sixteen single-family units in, and two, two bedrooms, I was thinking one bedrooms. So that's my biggest concern.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next.
Can you, can we turn this photograph to?
Sir, did you, sir, did you want to make those part of the record?
Yeah, okay. Just leave it there?
No, just, I'll take the picture. Thank you.
If you could just make sure they end up getting those guys' pool issue.
Good evening, counsel, Steve Michalini. I'm here on behalf of Chris Legori, an attorney whose office is right, is it on the screen correct? There we go. His office is right here. And I just wanted to reinforce the issue regarding parking. I mean, I think that it's absolutely amazing that they can't meet the parking for five units, and they want nine in an area that is starved for parking. This is, I mean, this is incredible to me, that they want to pay for a bonus and, and do that. This property right here has an office building, and they bought all of this just for parking. This law office here, and, and, and he's here to speak about this, he complies with the code. And, and if UT is the issue, what did UT do to, to supply their students if they had housing? They built a garage. They didn't just say, park on the street. This is a view looking north, and, and these two lots that you see here, this is all additional parking that Legori bought for supplemental parking, not, not to meet the code, he met the code down here on his building. So where are these people going to go? They're going across the street, they're going to Legori's lot, or they're going over here to the gentleman's lot that he just spoke, his apartment complex, which is here. Or they're going to go down here to the law office, or to this, this property here. This is, this is just an amazing request, you know. And you know that I show up before you and I ask for certain waivers for, for restaurants and things like that? This is residential. This is very, very different. Those people come and they stay. So where are they going to seek to park? They can't park on either side of Willow because there's no parking. This is a heavy traffic area. This is one of two lots that, that Legori bought for, for parking for his office building here. This was, uh, this photo was taken at about two-thirty in the afternoon. It, it's loaded with traffic. Where are you going to go? The same with this one, this is the parking lot across the street from the subject property. The, the staff found it inconsistent. You, you can't make a nine-unit complex consistent. It's, it's too much for this size of this property. They, they can't, they're removing more than fifty percent of the green space. They're, anyway, I, you see the letter, they can't meet the code. They need to go back to square one or deny this project. It simply doesn't, doesn't comply, it's not compatible with the surrounding areas, and it is, and it's a encroachment, and it's, it's a violation upon, or putting a, a burden on all of the other surrounding property owners. It simply doesn't make sense. Reducing the aisle widths for the drive aisles, putting angled parking, forcing the drive aisles to go out onto the alley.
Thank you, sir.
It's, it's not a good plan.
Steve, take this in the manner that it's offered. Will you please tell us some of your qualifications for the record?
Yes, sir. I, I've been certified by the Thirteenth Judicial Circuit Court as an expert in land use and zoning. I've been practicing land use and zoning for over thirty years on my own. And before that, I was the zoning administrator for the city of Tampa. I wrote many of the early zoning codes. The first PDs were, were drafts that I wrote, Mary Bryan typed them, and Dave.
With a selectric.
And with a selectric, there were no, there were no computers. We did this simply on, on typewriters. So I've been involved with land use and zoning in the city since the seventies.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, sir. And before Mr. Shelby, I, I had, just out of an abundance of caution, I wish to disclose, and I believe I have one or two, I think one case against the Legori Law Firm, just as a disclosure.
And you have no financial stake in the petition that's in front of you today?
Absolutely.
And what you're hearing today, you can still make a decision and be fair and impartial based on the competent substantial evidence?
Absolutely, sir.
Well, thank you for disclosing that, but it's my professional opinion that it is not, does not rise to the level of conflict that you're required to just make a vote.
And for the public, by a case, I mean a, a case where I represent a party that's adverse to one of his clients.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, James R. Schaefer. I own and occupy the building across from Mr. Legori on the corner of one-twenty South Willow. So I'm on the corner of Cleveland and Willow. There's the property to the immediate north of me, which is housing. And I believe, to my understanding, it seems like UT students, it's multi-family, and then the two lots. And then we have the alleyway in the back. The alleyway goes to nowhere because of the fire station. I don't want to rehash what it seems like you gentlemen already know and what has been said, but I've been there nineteen years. When I built that, everyone said, you're on the wrong side of the crosstown. Kind of freaked me out because I was really young then. But they were wrong. But I experienced a lot of problems. I don't have a lot of parking. I have six spots in the back, which we enter through the alleyway. I have two plus a handicap that you enter on Willow. I have persistent problems with people parking. And I'll preface this with, I have never towed anyone outside of business hours. That is not my intentions. I have cameras on my building. I, I don't sit in tupper trays and try to tow somebody. I've actually told people, encouraged them to do that. But I've had people taking up two spots at eleven AM. I have attorneys that can't park, can't work. And I believe it was Mr. Angelo, and I, I sympathize with him, but that alleyway, he's lost a lot of parking. There are sanitation issues. When they go to empty, there used to be that dumpster. And I figured it out a couple of months ago, they lay on the horn, because there's cars blocking, and they can't get to the cans and/or the dumpster. So I'm all for development. I, I am so happy there's going to be something there instead of two vacant lots. But I'm just personally concerned that the, the effect it's going to have on my business and the, and the potential parking overflow, knowing what I've seen, and, and to be honest with you, only primarily in the last five to six years. I've never had to have tow signs up. I didn't even, I didn't even know the law on it. I do marital and family law, so I, I don't sue as a general course or things like that. So I actually just found out that my tow sign up front was stolen. So I, I, you know, the relatively new cameras, if I knew how to check them, I probably could find out who did that. But I just wanted to, after hearing everybody's concerns, it's just my personal concern on the, the low amount of parking that's planned. Thank you.
Councilman Meniskoff, with it, Councilman Gibbs?
Well, the parking waiver does concern me. I, you know, I drive through this area, what is it, Cleveland going west, and I see how backed up Willow is, usually to the Kennedy Light. It's a, it's, it's not meant for heavy traffic. Historically, I mean, that's why these roads are so narrow. If you look at Boulevard, it's narrow. If you look at Willow, it's narrow. Before the crosstown, this was a lot of residential. So cramming something like this in this spot, requesting the waivers, and I thought about it, UT students, I was a UT student for a year, I think one out of ten of us had a car. So, you know, I understand that not everybody owns a car, but you don't know that. The thing is, you're accommodating so many students, what if all those students have cars? What if half of those students? What if half of those students have cars? Now you have an issue because you don't have any parking. They can't park on the street. You have an issue with the City of Tampa solid waste trying to come in. The gentleman mentioned that they lay on the horn. I just don't see an easy way out of this, to accommodate it, where, you know, it's the right thing to do from a land use perspective. So I don't think I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilman Goode.
I guess my big concern is sanitation. When I look at the photos there, I know how the garbage man operates. I mean, they can't get through, there's a problem. And I've got real concerns, and that's a big one, reference to that sanitation with those canisters.
Anyone else? Mr. Shelby?
Opportunity for the, based on what counsel is hearing.
I was gonna do that, yeah. Because we haven't closed yet. And before you go ahead, if I may, just before any other comments by counsel. We haven't closed yet, so you may speak, seek relief, what have you.
Very much appreciate all the comments and understand them. Again, as I previously stated, coming from Gainesville, I understand parking concerns and the effect that they can have on surrounding property businesses, et cetera. Gainesville's draconian about it, Tampa's not quite the same mentality. It's a different animal. The University of Tampa does have commuter parking lots, where these kids, you know, if they so choose, could park their car for weeks, months on end. That's nothing to do with our zoning. That's something you could enforce, that we can enforce as a condition, but it's available. And Mr. Citro.
Councilman Citro.
How close is that parking lot in which you're describing, the student parking? Is it within a thousand feet?
And you have to come forward if you're gonna speak, and please say your name.
Good evening, I'm Brett Walsh, South Willow Flats LLC. There's two parking garages on campus, as I understand it, and then there's a few more small parking commuter lots.
Is it within a thousand feet?
It's, I don't know, the footage, the big main parking garage for student commuters is pretty much in the center of campus. It's probably, if I had to guess, it's probably a little bit more than a thousand feet.
Did you approach anybody within the neighborhood for some sort of shared parking during off-peak hours?
No, I'm aware of the Legore parking across the street and the big office.
But did you approach the Legore Law Office?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If you wish to say anything, Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah. Mr. Malloy, I don't profess to be a psychic or anything, but I'm not hearing very good stuff up here. As a friendly suggestion, perhaps you might wanna, you know, ask for a continuance and revisit, since it is a PD, it's not, you know, you have opportunities to tweak issues that counsel has raised and come back another day. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to hurt the folks who have taken the time to come down here tonight, but I think that, out of fairness, maybe there's a better plan, especially as related to parking, and perhaps that underneath the building thing might be something you might wanna look at, so.
I very much appreciate that, and I will take that to heart, given the testimony given and the apparent mood of the counsel on it. Would ask respectfully for a continuance to perhaps rethink the parking situation, see if we can come back with something a bit more palatable, a bit, if not a waiver, at least much less of a waiver at this point. Rather than canceling the whole thing, let us redraw the plan and come back to you.
And before we go forward with that, I want, Councilman Miranda, nothing? Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Shelby?
I could inquire of the petitioner and staff, about how much time do you think you would need for that? How many, how?
We have a pretty firm backup plan. If notice is appropriate, if the time is appropriate, we'd love to make the next meeting. I'm not sure we can do that.
Ms. Saminiego, would you please?
Mary Saminiego, the next meeting's inappropriate. The next meeting is September 26th, which is already a full agenda. October agenda is full. It, I can't say, I'm not sure exactly the extent of the changes that they're proposing to make. Let me clarify. There are code provisions in the procedural section that says, based on the amount of changes, how far back into the review process they have to go. If they are proposing small changes, then we could maybe do it with a forty-five day review. If they're doing substantial changes, we might have to run it back through a DRC meeting again.
And Councilman Miranda?
In my opinion, this is a substantial change, forty percent reduction on parking, and that area is a lot. And I don't know what the people around there, you know, I'm not too much keen on rental properties, as you say, I'm gonna rent somebody else's lot, because that lot is developed, then your back is square one, and they got what they want. And I'm not talking, speaking about your case in general, I'm talking about. So therefore, it just, I think you've heard, and I think the vibrations are much louder than when we first started. And I'm not apologizing, but it's just something that doesn't fit.
If I may.
Can I understand students from UT, maybe walk? I was one of the poorer ones to go there, and even I had a car. And the people, and I ain't finished it, I haven't finished it. I haven't finished, and when I drove, the people that were walking used to push me around.
I was asking the model of the car. You had a run zoning car.
I can't tell you, sir. It's in a museum.
It belongs in a museum. And one thing, if I may, with that, that, you know, we're, correct me if I'm wrong, this housing is not exclusively for University of Tampa students. That is where, that is the pond that you're aiming to fish from, correct?
Yeah.
Correct. I'm pretty sure, and I won't speak for him, but I'm not sure if the city would care to entertain a deed restriction or alike that says you have to be a student or student-related to...
Go ahead, ma'am.
Mary Saminiego, typically you can't, and again, Ms. Moore, you can speak to this if I say anything incorrect, but typically you can't put a condition on a plan development as something that the city can enforce. So I don't know necessarily if the City Code Enforcement Department would be able to check leases and IDs of whether or not they're enrolled in a school program.
I just mentioned that because we're focusing a lot on University of Tampa. For all we know, a third of the individuals, half more, aren't UT students. Maybe they're not students, maybe they're folks that work nearby. So I think that seeking relief from UT for parking potentially would only address part of our concerns. There's a larger issue here, which is you're gonna have people, whether they're, you know, students, whether they're whatever, whether they're members of City Council, whoever it is, and there's gonna be parking challenges for anybody. And I would encourage you, just for whatever accounts here, just to continue to check with the folks that surround you as to any proposals you make, because that's just for your own sake, I guess.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And for what it's worth, I think our backup plan on this, horizontal's not an option, obviously, so vertical is Plan B.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may inquire of Mr. Malloy. Mr. Malloy, it looks like the staff had said that October is not available. Would you then prefer November 14th or December 12th or later than that?
November 14th, please.
November 14th at 6:00 p.m.? Is that acceptable to you? Is that what you're requesting?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Meniscov. All in favor? Or you know what, before, do I have to take any public comments on the motion to continue?
No, sir.
Okay.
But if I can, just before you take the vote, just to let the people in the audience know that you will receive no additional notice of the next meeting. Your notice is coming tonight in the form of this motion. It is being set for November 14th, Thursday, at 6:00 p.m. And Mr. Chairman, I apologize, thank you for...
That's fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Councilman Carlson.
Marty, sorry for this, sorry for the stupid question, but why don't we notice people when it gets continued? Why don't we require a notice?
Because A, it's not a statutory requirement, it's not in the code, and B, what we normally do is, notice usually requires at least a long period of timeout. It also requires an expense to the petitioner, and it is an involved process. It also requires the filing of an affidavit and proof to the city clerk. It's a very involved process, so what we do, counsel, and it's a very good question, what we do is, the law allows for you to continue what we call a notice train. In other words, as long as, as long as we continue it and announce the date and time, and that's why I make a point, to make sure that the public hears the date and time, then we are compliant with the law, and people who watch or follow or are present are on notice of when the next meeting is.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we move down to the final countdown to number eleven.
Item number eleven is REZ, Mary Saminiego for the record. Item number eleven is REZ 1970. It's a rezoning request for 3015 West Columbus Drive from Plan Development to Plan Development for a bank with a drive-in window.
Good evening, councilmembers. David Hay with your Planning Commission staff. I have been sworn, we end the evening in the central Tampa Planning District. The subject site is located on West Columbus Drive, which is a designated transit emphasis corridor. Onto the aerial, this is the subject site at the northeast corner of Columbus and MacDill. This is the CBS, this is the Waffle House. You can see it's mostly, this is a commercial node. Directly to the north is single-family detached residential. Onto the future land use map, the subject site and all these parcels in this pink are the community mixed-use 35. Future land use, it's more intense on the south side of Columbus in this community commercial 35, which allows up to the CI. And you can see immediately to the north is that residential 10, future land use category where the...
Where's the West Tampa Convention Center, David?
It was right there. Yeah, right there. Right where the Waffle House is. As you all know, this was originally developed as a bank. It was approved a couple years back for medical office. They wanna go back to the bank. It would not, it would be comparable and compatible, they're using the existing building. So based on that, Planning Commission staff recommends that this be found consistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mary Saminiego, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. Again, this is a request from Plan Development to Plan Development. Here is the subject property. Per the staff report, I've outlined it. This was approved as a PD in 2004, Z0444, for a bank with drive-in, but allowing all CG uses. Then last year, for REZ 1810, they wanted to convert the building and add on to it for a business professional office and a medical office. Since that time, deals have fallen through, and so now the applicant wants to convert the property back to a Plan Development to allow only a bank with a driving window. There are, so basically, the site will remain as-is with some slight site modifications. There are no waivers required or being requested. There are changes for planning and development, just some minor notations needed to the site plan. So if you do approve this, please refer to the revision sheet, and the Development and View and Compliance staff did find this consistent with the City of Tampa Land Development ordinance. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions from counsel? Thank you, ma'am. Applicant here.
Good evening. Azamul Sheikh with Global Engineering Associates, on behalf of the owner. Basically, it's, the bank is existing, and you just wanna go back to the, have the correct zoning for it. I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Any questions from counsel for the applicant? Councilman Meniscov.
No, this should be pretty cut and dry, going back to a bank. I don't know what was gonna go there and didn't go there when we last rezoned.
It was a medical office.
Yeah.
And we were going through permitting, actually, and he got an offer he couldn't refuse.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much, sir. Is anyone here and anything else, sir?
That's it.
Just making sure. Is anyone else, or is anybody here from the public here to comment on item number eleven? We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Meniscov. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I believe Councilman Goode's, I think you're next, sir. If you don't mind, sir, taking number ten. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Dingfelder, my apologies.
I didn't want to burden him.
And I'm sorry, eleven, excuse me.
Okay. In regard to file REZ 1966, I'll move an ordinance...
I'm sorry, sir, what number are you reading?
Eleven.
Eleven, yes, thank you, good catch. In regard to REZ 1970, I'll move an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3015 West Columbus Drive for first reading consideration. In the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classifications, PD, Plan Development, Medical Office, Business Professional Office, to PD, Plan Development, Bank with Drive-In, provide an effective date, and specifically that the petitioner has met its burden of proof, providing competent substantial evidence that the development, as conditioned and so known, the site plan is consistent with Comprehensive Plan in the City Code, and specifically that this operated under the previous PD bank for probably more than ten years without issue, and that's what it's returning to, as Mr. Meniscov pointed out. Along with the revision, thank you, Ms. Miranda.
Well, thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The motion carried unanimously, second reading and adoption will be on October 3rd at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we go to reports, motions at the end. Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Councilman, if I may, Mary Saminiego, Planning, Design and Development Coordination. This is Kristin Moore's last City Council meeting, and I wanted to thank her for staff for years of professional expertise and assistance with our department.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I unfortunately wasn't here for the commendation that occurred, but, you know, you do a great job, and I've had the pleasure of working with you for about two and a half years or so, and you're a real top-notch professional. And just being an attorney, I know the kind of pressure that you're under, and you wear it well, to quote Rod Stewart. So thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir, Councilman Carlson.
If we don't make a, Kristen, if we don't make a motion to close the meeting, you officially have to stay, right?
And Councilman Dingfelder, were you gonna say something, sir?
Just under new business.
Okay, yes, sir, go for it.
Okay. So, Mary, you might wanna, I don't know. It's sort of relevant to you and your world, Kathy's world, et cetera. This issue of bonus density comes back up periodically, and I'm not completely convinced that it's a great provision that's in the best interest of the city. So I'd like to request, respectfully request, a staff report in a November meeting, Mr. Shelby, to start the discussion about the pros and cons of the bonus density provisions, what's the history on it, is it applicable in all, in all locations of the city and that sort of thing, and just get a discussion going about it.
Kristin Moore, Legal Department, if I may make a suggestion, sir. I believe that that may come up during a workshop for January 30th. I think that that dovetails excellently with a motion that Councilman Goode's has as well. So if I may make that suggestion, to incorporate that into that workshop, that would be an appropriate time to potentially discuss those issues.
What cycle does that necessarily throw any proposed changes into?
It would put them, it would be after the January 15th cutoff for the January cycle, so it would be looking at July. But it may be an involved discussion. I know that each time that this has come up, there's been a lot to talk about, so I don't imagine this will be one where we, you know, or my successor will throw together code language over the course of a weekend. It'll probably be a fairly involved discussion, I would imagine.
I'll tell you what. I hear what you're saying. I'd like to go ahead and start that discussion in November, just through a staff report. Maybe it can be minimal, and we can start discussing the pros and cons. And then if we need to carry it over until January, then we know that that's happening. But, you know, if there's an opportunity to make that January cycle, it'd be nice to be able to do so.
Seven. Councilman Dingfelder, you presently only have two staff reports, or the 21st, which is your last meeting before the Thanksgiving holiday, you have one staff report.
I'm good November 21st.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion by Councilman, yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Can I ask him to please clarify exactly what data he wants in the staff report?
What data?
Like what information are you requesting?
Well, like I said, a...
Well, like I said, a discussion of the pros and cons of the history of the bonus density provision, and what it, you know, why it's there, and what are the pros and cons of having it there. And, you know, in regard to data, you know, that sounds like a lot of work that I'm not necessarily asking for at this point. Maybe if we continue it to January, we can get more into the data. What were you thinking about, Mary?
I just wanted to clarify, so when I report to my director, and she asked, what are we supposed to report on? It was clear what you were requesting, and I think it's clear now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think it ties into the workshop in January. That's why I pushed the workshop back so legal and staff can have time to bring us good information of not what we can't do, but what we can do to move things along, because I've already had a discussion just yesterday before Ms. Kristen's leaving in reference to a community business ordinance agreement, and these keep coming up. So we talked about benefits here, but should be going here, or benefits that are not even really helping foster any type of economic development that I see. So I think that's a good discussion to maybe start out, but I think once we kind of lay out a little groundwork, by January, we should have a full impact of what we're looking to do, and also the community can have their say in that as well as ideas the community may have, because a lot of people in the community are asking about this particular issue, and it is a concern.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. No, not yet. Well, we have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Niskalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
No, thank you. Thank you, Green.
Yes, sir. Councilman Goode's.
Sir, I have two motions for this evening. One motion to give a commendation to Ms. LA Baggett, founder of the ladies of the Heights Social Group for a hygiene drive initiative in which she has donated more than 4,000 hygiene products to 19 different schools across Hillsborough County on 9/19/2019.
And before we do that, I do not have my schedule for that day. What do we have that day with commendations?
What day again, sir? I'm sorry. What day?
Oh, that's next Thursday.
It's next Thursday. Next Thursday being September...
It looks like two commendations at 9:00 a.m.
And they're both mine, actually. It's the Medal of Honor and Titus O'Neil. I'm trying, yeah, the convention, what is, I mean, let me ask you, Councilman Goode's, is that, is that a date, one of the only dates she can make, or is that, is it time-sensitive?
That's the date I was given.
By her. So, and she works? I mean, like that's-
I didn't go through the full conversation, so I don't know if we took that was already approved range to the date, so I don't really know.
Okay. And I'll tell you what, I'll do this, I'm going to talk about something afterwards, because we have to start limiting the number of commendations and other things that we do per meeting, but I'll do it. I'll do it this time. But darn it, I'll talk about it at the end. So we have a motion by Councilman Goode's, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And those were the only two other ones that day, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Crowe, right? That's the only two.
And they were both, and they were both mine, by the way, so I am an offender.
We can find another day. We can find another day. He says, he says that another day can-
You said 19 is already good. You already said we do it the 19th.
Are you good for the 19th?
We'll do it the 19th, that's fine, but we'll, afterwards, we'll, we have some stuff to talk about with that. Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. Also, I'd like to make a-
Is there a motion?
Thank you. Sorry.
Also, I'd like to make a motion to give a commendation to Reverend Oscar Johnson, Jr., passed away posthumously, posthumously, retired educator and longtime pastor of service as a member of Hillsborough County School District for 35 years. The commendation was presented to his family at the services today determined, which will probably be either at the wake on Friday, or I'll take it to the service on Saturday.
We have a motion by Councilman Goode's, a second by Councilman Niskalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Niskalko.
It's that time of year again. Our former mayor, Dick Greco, has a birthday on Saturday. I wouldn't wish him a happy birthday. Eighty-six years old. I will not be presenting a commendation, but just wanted to make that noted. Thank you.
And, okay, Councilman Citro.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank our City of Tampa legal staff for keeping a secret to the commendation that was given to Ms. Mora today. Thank you very much. You did a great job on not letting Ms. Mora know. In that case, what I have to ask for is move that Ms. Kristen Mora, get a commendation on her wonderful three years of exemplary service with the legal staff of the City of Tampa.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Goode's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also, I'd like to see a move for a commendation given to Ms. Theda James. She has given 27 years of service to the Public Defender's Office, and she is retiring, and her heartfelt thank you for justice for all for the citizens of Hillsborough County.
We have a, yes, sir?
Is that to be presented to her outside of council?
Outside of council. Yes, thank you very much.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, I believe, a second by Councilman Goode's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
One last thing I'd like to thank, the mayor of Tampa, the Honorable Jane Castor, for allowing me to give a commendation to Jesuit High School, celebrating their 100th and 20th year. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Miranda.
I've got eight commendations to give.
To be presented tonight.
Not today. At the request of the Planning Commission, I would like to make a motion to set an adoption here for the City of Tampa, official year 20 through official year 24 for capital improvement section CIS, Schedule of Projects, updating on the evening of October 24th, 2019, at 5:01 p.m.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor? Any opposed? Any in favor? Anything else, sir? Okay, Councilman Carlson.
So I think at the last meeting, I asked, I asked for a motion to contact the Planning Commission about doing neighborhood commercial district plans, and then they responded. I think they CC'd all of you all. And then I worked with them over the last 24 hours or so to come up with a motion. So what their, their new proposal is, instead of giving grant money, what they would do is pro bono, do a community plan or a neighborhood plan around these areas. And that means, because pro bono, and they would bring in other agencies, it would be worth a lot more than the $10,000, $20,000 that we were proposing. This is a thing that I wanted to do, because I wanted to get the area around MacDill and Bay to Bay planned. There was a conflict over the Bay to Bay plan a few months ago, and this neighborhood badly wants to be planned. But as I was doing it, I requested that we get at least one in each district, so that we could do this as a beta test, and if we get more money, then maybe we could do all 130 neighborhood commercial districts throughout the city. Anyway, what they, what they've come back and proposed is that we would request one per year for the next four years. And we have to decide which district and then which area within a district. We don't have to do it right now. But I would ask you all, when they come back, if we could do that area in South Tampa first, and then if we end up with all for transportation plan money, then we won't need any of this in the future, maybe, but we could do one per year. Anyway, I'd like to make a motion to request that the Planning Commission work collaboratively with the City of Tampa staff for the purpose of developing an approach toward the establishment of neighborhood commercial district plans. This approach would be brought to council for consideration with the goal of the Planning Commission, city staff, and potential assistance of partner agencies to develop a district plan in each council district each year over the next four years, in order, in an order to be determined by council.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yes. With the budget that we approved last week, with the pipes being put in, there were neighborhoods, especially Historic Hyde Park, that have brick streets or that have brick underneath asphalt, and they're very concerned about what will happen to the bricks. They don't want the bricks to be ripped up and thrown away. They don't want them to be taken and hauled away somewhere else. And so they asked me if we could please request staff to come back and report to us on what they plan to do with the bricks as they're doing construction on these roads.
Do you have a date attached to that?
No, sorry, I don't.
Just a quick comment on that. Some of us are commenting, there's already, I got the same email, there's already an ordinance in place to protect the bricks. I'm not exactly sure if the bricks are under existing asphalt. I'm not really sure how that ordinance comes into play. But if it's clearly, currently a brick street, the ordinance is there and-
Yeah, I think mainly they're worried about the ones underneath asphalt.
Underneath asphalt, I'm not really sure how that works. So in that regard, go for it.
Okay. We have a, and what day?
What day, sir?
I, sorry, I didn't have one.
Well, the question is, how long do you want to give staff to be able to come back?
We can come back whenever it's, whenever we have time on the schedule. It's not, it's not-
Want to take a look at those October dates, I think we were talking about?
The October 24th is a workshop session, and you have, that's a very full session, October 24th. The 17th is quite full with staff reports.
How about November? Is that?
November 7th is pretty quiet.
Okay, let's take November 7th.
How many staff reports we have there?
For that one, presently, two.
Okay, good. If that's, yes. Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by whom?
Senator.
We have a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
One last quick thing, hopefully quick. I've had a lot of interested parties asking me about the benches in Gaslight Park, and I've heard rumors about what might happen, but would you all be okay if we asked staff to come back and report to us on what's happening with the benches?
They'll tell you that they were beyond repair, so they replaced them with these planted things, and blah, 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 and that's it. But I'll second that.
And what, do you have a date?
Can we do November 7th? Probably it'll be resolved before then, but just so that we can make a motion that we're interested.
We have a motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Niskalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Thank you.
Okay. Just very briefly, gentlemen, with, and thank you, and I'm not making any motions. With regards to especially day and morning meetings, I'm going to be putting forth what I call, I don't want to call them the Ten Commandments, there are going to be more of this 10 strong suggestions, there's probably not going to be 10, but just dealing with a couple of issues. And look, I want to, I want to state this, before I was chair, in my first two and a half years on a lot of different things, I was often, with me and Councilman Reddick, there was always a running joke with regards to commendations, so trust me, I get that 110 percent. But on a couple of issues, such as, for example, public comment, you know, if you actually take a look at our rules for Tampa City Council, they actually preclude 100 percent, essentially, council interaction with the public during public comment. I never enforce that, because I know we like to talk to the public, but there's a saying that, I don't know if I made it, maybe I did, but it's, you can't change people, but you can tame their excesses. So what I'm trying to do is just to tame some of the excesses, because for example, public comment often becomes a town hall. And essentially, we're trying to run meetings here where people are waiting for hearings, land use development hearings, rezoning hearings, et cetera, et cetera, and there's nothing wrong with engaging the public, but there's got to be some modest limitations on that, I think, so that we can continue to have hearings on issues such as speaking. Staff reports, you'll notice that I'm checking on how many staff reports, having eight or nine staff reports at the end. Again, something that takes us to a long time. And then commendations, and again, I want to emphasize, September 19th, there's two commendations on there, they're both mine. So, you know, I'm not throwing stones here in a glass house, I'm trying to create a better house here, I guess, if you will. So certain things that I'm going to be proposing, again, nothing draconian, everybody here is my friend, we're all friends, et cetera. I want everybody to be engaged, but again, I want to just tame the excesses. That's all. So we'll be talking. Councilman?
In regard to staff reports and staff talking to us about agenda items that are there, you know, come up within the day or two of the meeting, Chief Bennett and I have had discussions, and again, this relates also to them not showing up, but he's clearly indicated that they would be thrilled if we gave them a time certain.
Yes.
In the neighborhood of like, you know, 10 or 10:30, whatever's reasonable. And then that way, they know when to be here, chances are, they'll be in and out within at least an hour, and we can lump them all together and save staff time. And that's been done in the past.
Yep, and I agree 100 percent with that. We are working on that. But with regards to the number of items, again, I don't want the public to have to sit there for, during that for an extra hour and a half or something, again, a reasonable time. So I think by reasonably limiting the number of staff reports, and I don't mean anything draconian, so like two or three, you know, maybe looking at five, something-
But those are staff reports that are pre-scheduled. There are some staff reports that relate to a lot of items that have been pulled.
Yep, yep. And that actually, we can't prevent, so long as the proper protocols are followed, et cetera. But again, looking just to tame the excesses, so that we don't have folks that are here for, you know, 10:30 or whatever hearing that goes forward, or one, you know, attorneys who are billing clients, et cetera. Again, just to, you know, trim the fat, so to speak, so I'll be putting forth some proposed changes, and we can talk about them, have a dialogue, and then we can even have a meeting since it's procedure and not substance, correct?
It'd be a noticed meeting, but it doesn't have to be televised, and it doesn't have to be in this chambers.
Great. Anyone else?
Is there any regulation regarding the meeting?
Absolutely, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, and as I say to council, they are council's rules, and if the rules and the council's pleasure requires those rules to be changed, there's a process to do that. The rules are created for council's benefit.
Yep. And one thing, for example, again, if you take a look at our rules, they're very conservative. For example, commendations are only to be given during workshops. I don't follow that. I mean, I think Mary Bryant once joked, commendations are pretty much all we got. You know what I mean? To express our values in the community, et cetera. So I'm a big proponent of them, so I'm just looking for, I guess, additional reasonable restrictions within the excess. Councilman Goode's, and then Councilman Dingfelder.
Well, I was going to say about commendations, what that limit may be, or a certain day, if you're going to say a workshop day, then that's the day we do all commendations, whatever. But, I mean, I don't want to say we're just going to limit it to one or two, you know, if you've got a whole council of seven people. So, I mean, it's be mindful of that as well, to where we got a council of seven, everybody has a commendation. Those dates might not be feasible all the time, so I just want to make sure that we do something that we, if you're limited, have a decent limit, and then that way, or a workshop day, which would have multiple.
Sure.
Look at that. And also as towards public comment. You read about the rule, about, what's in our statute for our public comment? What is it, Mr. So?
Oh, the council should avoid engaging the public in dialogue during public comment.
Should. It doesn't say you can't, you know, I look at public comment, I'm just going to be candid with it. It's a chance for the people to have their say. And I would never want to be a councilman where there's legitimate concern from a constituent at that podium, at that lecture, and I sit there like a vault on a log and just do nothing or say nothing. I think that's wrong, it's irresponsible, and I just can't see myself, knowing the person I am, not to engage with a person when I know something is wrong, and they're taking their heart, their time to come down here, to express their concern because they haven't been heard. So I trade caution for us to look at that, and I think, for me, that's a real serious subject for me, sir.
And, and actually, I agree with you 100%, which is why I'm not precluding. I wouldn't even propose enforcing the, the 100% should. There are moments, I mean, I, that's why I wouldn't do that, because I, I, I would fall victim to that. But again, it's, there are certain things that can be handled outside of council, there are certain things that can be handled with, you know, give Maeda a call, et cetera, and there's certain things where it's like, hey, listen, I want to talk right now, right here. So again, that's all I'm saying, is just to tame the excesses, that's all. I, I'm not gonna preclude it, I think that would be draconian, and, and I don't think it would be consistent with what this council wants to do. Councilman Dingfelder?
I appreciate you addressing all of these. I think that commendations should be, should, we should try and limit them to X amount of time, maybe three to five minutes, you know, when possible. I think presentations from outside agencies that come in to tell us about whatever they're doing, again, should, you know, we should give them guidance as to what the expected time is, five to 10 minutes. And, and also, and Steve, I'm glad you're here, on the blank of the month, okay? Those get a little long, and, you know, for a variety of reasons, and part of that is the gifts, the gift thing is, I've just gone crazy since I left eight years ago, which is, it's wonderful for the people, but it does take a lot of time.
Sure.
And it, and it, sometimes it feels like an advertisement. So maybe we can, you can talk to Steve, you know, and say, maybe we can limit the gifts to five gifts per person, or something like that. And again, I'm just talking about expediency of time, because we have a lot of competing stuff going on before we even get to the meat of our agenda, you know, so.
Yeah, and with regards to the firefighter, police officer, soon ATU employee of the month or the quarter, or whatever it may be, you know, I, I personally, I don't think the gifts are the, the major contributing cause of things, that's just my opinion. But obviously, if there is somebody up there taking excessive amount of time, that is certainly something that's gonna be done. Uh, but I know, for example, on the first week of October, Councilman Goode will be presenting our first ATU member of the month, we're very excited. There's certain things that, that, you know, should take time, and I think are part and parcel of what we do. Public comment is also part of that, again, where, you know, I remember when a gentleman during the old council came to speak to us, that he was having a rally for mental health awareness, and he disclosed that his son had, it's tragic, run away from his mental institution, ran away from home, and he wanted us to come and, and go to a rally that week at USF, and I spoke with him at length, and, so again, I'm, I'm not precluding that 100%. Again, you can't change people, tame the excesses, that's all I'm asking. Yes, sir?
I, I think the dialogue is really important, I think you all are saying that. What I would rather do is limit the number of items instead of limiting the dialogue, because I think it's fair if, if we don't, if we have too many items between now and November 7th, then I have to put an event on, discussion on November 7th. And it, it would be great if we could address more issues, but it's better to have the dialogue on the others. The other thing, like I said this morning, there are some issues that, not because, it's not because we're new, but because I think we, we are, we believe that some of the processes should be changed, and they, and then it looks like the mayor and, and Chief of Staff and others think the process should be changed. As those processes are, are changing, it's taking more time to discuss things. As the process, once the processes are changed, I, in the next few months, I think things will move a lot faster, too.
Sure. And, and again, I want to make clear with this, I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, because if you'd like to take a look at the two commendations we have next week, they're both mine. So again, there, there's no finger pointing, I want to- Thank you, sir. Just, well, y'all, I appreciate 100%, like I said, we're with friends. We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Are you adjourned, sir?
Yes, sir, we are.
We're not adjournings, I'm just, you can leave.
I'd like to put on the record all of our appreciation for Kristen's work as well. She's been a great asset to the city. Hate to see her go, but going to Tico.